Royal Commission is now in session.
Good morning, all. Welcome to the seventh day of this hearing on people with cognitive disability and the criminal justice system. I now invite Commissioner Mason to give the acknowledgement of country this morning.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge the First Nations people as the original inhabitants of the lands on which this hearing is sitting. Ngara ngar jokorurungko, galrani arungo guari pa chara ninanja joda, ngora nanancha. We recognise Meijin, Brisbane. Ngara ngar ngorokanta nanyi ngora, Meijin nga Brisbaneta. We recognise the country north and south of the Brisbane River as the home of the Tueroa and Jagaera nations. Ngara ngar ngorokanta nanyi karol. Anya Brisbane River nya, alenjara mono olparira, anunga arungo ngora rija, juda ninanja mono guari ninanyi, tueroa nga mono jagorana. And we pay respect to the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation. Their land is where the city of Sydney is now located. We pay deep respects to all elders, past, present and future, and especially elders, parents and young people with disability. I'd like to now read the First Nations content warning. This hearing will include evidence that may bring about different responses for people. It will include accounts of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of First Nations people with disability. It will also include references to First Nations people who are deceased. If the evidence raises concerns for you, please contact the National Counselling and Referral Service on 1-800-421-468. You can also contact Lifeline on 131114, Beyond Blue on 1300 224 636, or, for First Nations viewers, your local Aboriginal medical services for social and emotional wellbeing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. Yes, Dr. Malefond?
Thank you. Good morning. Today is the first of two days in respect of a case study as to the cognitive impairment diversion programme, which was a pilot programme run by the Intellectual Disability Rights Service, IDRS, between 2017 and 2020 and funded by the New South Wales Government. The object of the programme was to increase the diversion of people with a cognitive impairment charged with low-level offences away from the criminal justice system under Section 32 of the Mental Health Forensic Provisions Act 1990, or through other non-hostile sentences. This was primarily achieved by providing dedicated support people who would arrange and coordinate expert reports to support applications for diversion orders, apply for additional NDIS funding, and assist with coordinating services and help legal representatives to provide accessible advice and representation. Funding for that project was seized by the New South Wales Government on the 30th of June 2020. Today, we will hear from four witnesses in respect of this case study. After the morning break, we will hear from Mr. Michael Baker, advocate from IDRS, and Ms. Janine Coates, AM, executive officer from IDRS, who will speak to what the CIDP was able to accomplish, as well as the challenges of short-term and uncertain funding. We'll also hear from two lived experience witnesses who were recipients of the service. The first will be Mr. Jeffrey Thomas, who has participated by way of pre-recording his evidence. His written statement and extracts of his pre-recorded oral statement, I found at tabs seven and eight of tender bundle A, and I asked for those documents to be tended into evidence and for them to be marked as exhibits 11.28.1 through 11.28.10 respectively.
Yes, thank you. That will be done.
Thank you. Then later today, we will hear from Ms. Taylor Budan, and I apologise, I had been mispronouncing her surname until now. Her evidence was taken again by pre-record, and we will have that played later today. If we can therefore commence by playing the extracts of the pre-record from Mr. Thomas. There are a number of extracts, but they will be played sequentially. I don't intend to pause between. Thank you.
Good morning, Geoff. I wondered if you could tell the Royal Commission your full name?
My name's Jeffrey Alan Thomas.
And just to be clear, we also have Taylor and Michael in the room today with us supporting you. How old are you at the moment, Geoff?
Fifty-one.
All right. You prepared and signed a statement for the Royal Commission?
Yep.
And you've got a copy of it here with you today?
I do.
All right. You signed it on the 15th of January 2021, is that right? And I think it's 17 pages, does that sound right? All right. Can you confirm that what's in it is true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm going to ask you questions about the topics that you cover in your statement. If you want to have a look at your statement, feel free, but let's discuss it as best we can, one-on-one, as you remember it. If there's anything you forget or think you need to add as we go, just pipe up and let me know. First thing I wanted to talk about, and you discussed it at the start, you know, topic entitled "About Me Are Your Disabilities or Disability"? What are your disabilities?
I have cognitive brain impairment, anxiety, chronic depression, suicidal ideation, ADD, and a few other problems, but that's basically it.
All right. And can you tell the Royal Commission about how those disabilities affect you today?
It's quite challenging. I struggle socially and I struggle with most authoritarian-type organisations or communicating is sometimes very hard.
Yeah. And I think you talked a bit about those frustrations with authoritarian organisations in your statement, and I'll come to some of those topics, yeah? Is that right?
Yeah.
All right. You're an NDIS participant, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
And you live in public housing?
I do, yes.
Can you tell the Royal Commission a bit about where you live? Is it a specific type of accommodation or?
So my residence is an over 55s complex. It's New South Wales housing. And I work there as the chairperson for the Residence Committee and do work with Green Australia for the Conand Garden area.
So you're pretty involved around the place?
I try to keep my finger in the fire.
And how long have you lived there?
Five years, maybe, yeah.
Yeah. One thing that's clear, it comes out in your statement when I read it, is how much you relish your independence. That's something that's very important to you.
That's true.
Do you feel at the moment in your life that you have that independence? Or are there ways that could improve, you think?
Well, there's lots of ways it can improve. Some of it is issues that I need to address personally. Others are organisational type things, systemic problems within those organisations, communication issues.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, so anything to do with government organisations is difficult at best times, but and presently Covid has made it even more stressful and harder to deal with a lot of issues.
I see. And again, I'll come back to some of the systemic changes that you talk about at the end of your statement. You make a number of suggestions and recommendations, but on your lived experience, correct?
Yeah, that's true.
You're an Aboriginal man. Can you tell the Royal Commission about your cultural identity and what being Aboriginal person means to you?
For me, it was late in life that I pursued that course because it was information that was given to me later on and off.
Yeah.
I pursued that through Close the Gap Aboriginal men's groups and Stride, when we get to things like NATO and stuff, we experienced some cultural education.
Yeah.
Right at present, everything's come to a standstill, so nothing's happening much at all face-to-face.
Yeah.
Close the Gap and Stride. I've been supportive and facilitating things in that area when it was working pre-Covid.
You mentioned Stride, and just for context, Stride are the people that support you and Taylor's from Stride today, correct?
That's right.
You grew up in the 60s and 70s. What was it like then, growing up with a disability? You may not have had the diagnosis, as I understand it, but can you tell the Royal Commission about your experience of a person with a disability then?
No. The diagnosis just started to occur and they weren't as educated then as to how to go about child diagnosis with Microsoft and stuff. There definitely wasn't a sports systems, but I I found because in education in school, there was still corporal punishment, so it became being hit by teachers, being basically stood over by teachers. If you were a person who was different in the classroom,
Yeah.
they didn't accommodate. There was no no facilities for students, so.
Yeah. So behavioural challenges were dealt with fairly brutally.
Punished. You were canned, or you were slapped, or you were sent out of the room, or you were sent home. There was nothing that was.
Did you have a support teacher, for example?
Not until high school.
Yeah.
But that was in the form of a special class. That was pretty irrelevant to me. I was just by luck, I met an English teacher and she realised I couldn't write or write.
Yeah.
And so she said about putting time aside to teach me, and that was the first good experience I had within the public school system.
And that was in high school?
Yeah, and I went to different public schools, so.
Because you moved around with mum?
Yes.
You grew up with mum and moved around quite a bit?
Doing seasonal work, picking potatoes, oranges, apples, working on sheep stations as cook mum worked, so we moved to support us.
Yes, Dr. Malefond?
The next one we'll play in sequence, Chair. We'll just take a minute or so between each.
Oh, thank you.
It came about with the courts. I tried to leave out home as soon as I was fourteen, I suppose, is when I started working. I was still going to high school and tried to separate myself from family home. But I'd gone to court and it was the first time I'd ever had anything to do with the police. And they charged me for a crime I didn't commit. And I can say that all those years later, it won't change me, and I have no reason to lie, but that was the beginning of my criminal record, and I absolutely did not do what those kids were doing.
Yeah.
And as a result of that, the magistrate ordered that I go and move with Abitha Baptist Minister
Yeah.
and his family. So he identified maybe that home wasn't the best place, and maybe because I was going to a youth group in this church, he saw that as an option because the minister turned up to give.
Important. How did you feel about that arrangement that the court had ordered for you at the time?
I personally, most probably would have taken up the offer. In the end, I was teaching scripture classes. I was going to go to Missouri Springfield to become a minister and the whole. And I had a job at Airlock Windows at Windsor, or working paying for the airfare, so saving money to go over there, which was all good and well, but at the time, I thought, I've met a magistrate and these police, and all in five minutes of my life would be the total time that they named me. And they're deciding what's best for me. I couldn't work that one out.
Yeah.
And then I couldn't work out my mum's behaviour, but there wasn't much I could do about. And there was, I don't even think, at that time, from my memory, it wasn't a question of whether I wanted to plead guilty or not guilty. It was what my mum had decided, the minister had decided, what the police and the magistrate had decided, and that was that I must have done it because the police said so.
Yeah.
And there must be these consequences, and that's what you were doing, and I didn't have much choice.
Yeah.
Certainly didn't have a say. No one talked to me pre-court or.
Advised you or said, "I'm your lawyer"?
There's no representation. No one in that court was there for me to say, "Jeffrey, what do you want to do? Did you do this? How do you feel about, do you want to fight this? You want to appeal? Do you want to do it?" None of that.
And that was your first contact with the court and police?
With the police and the justice system, yeah.
In your statement, after you talk about that experience, you talk about, I think, six more times that you were incarcerated, the last being about 2003. This is a very open-ended question. There's lots to it, and I'll probably return to some of them. But can you tell the Royal Commission about your experiences in prison?
Experiences in prison? Well, corruption makes corruption. So I went in. I saw that there was not much loyalty between inmates. I even knew that it was supposed to be a code. It was much like the boys at school. The bigger you were, the better off you were. Unless you were the type of person that would knife in someone's back or something, then you could aspire to great heights, but it was the way the system, for me, the people that were there to facilitate your incarceration and make sure that you were safe and did the things that were required, were the very people that, when it came down to it, in my case, I was writing letters to the Ombudsman, to the Independent Commissioner against corruption. I was in touch with Justice Action and trying to make things better inside the prison system. And I was representing inmates that couldn't get legal representation. I was involved in Royal Commissions about building this up. I was prisons, more prisons, all yay or nay to that. I thought prevention was better than building more of that prisons, but it's still building. So the more I used the system that was put there to make sure corruption didn't exist, the more I was threatened and the more my life was in danger. Even my mother was made aware of that and was told if I didn't stop, that something bad was going to happen. And I never, I worked all through and I got education as much as I could and I achieved words for words, but I did all of that I had to fight for. I had to, and once you upset one of the officers, getting a job is really difficult, but I was a good worker. Getting other things, I put myself in a precarious position. And, but there were some, I say there's always good and bad everywhere, but some officers saw the good in you and said, "This guy's trying to help people, inmates who are not being fed, inmates who are not being admitted", what can be so bad about that? So they helped me. I think things might far worse than that, but none of it was safe. There is no corrective and corrective services, no rehabilitation.
With your disabilities that we talked about, as of the current time, were they recognised then or recognised in prison? The disabilities you have, the diagnoses, were they something that was recognised in the prison system?
When I first got to prison, I was suicidal, to say the least. I was, yeah, very scared. I was. So I ended up in what they called D Ward, which was a wing of cells in the middle of nowhere. And you were naked when you went into the cell and had nothing but a blanket. And that was mental health.
Right.
And you would spend it in a demountable type thing, maybe an hour or two during the day, and then you were back in for seven, nine hours, naked in the cell, and that was it. Your man would be passed through. And Dilagactol would be your medication to keep you calm, and that was.
That was it?
That was, that was so.
They were your adjustments to your disability?
Yeah, that was before the point healthcare package.
I might jump towards to, you want some, you talk about changes that you suggest or propose with a number of institutions. One is the police. You talk about cultural change?
Yeah.
You talk also, I think, about education of police and also some of these other institutions we talked about, like courts, et cetera. What, in your reform suggestions, what's your idea on education for them? And who should give it?
Well, I think that they could make a regular situation where mental health professionals come into the police station, or the police attend an in-service at the hospital.
Yeah.
And then they are taken through what would be most likely case scenarios, like patients with drug-related psychosis or chronic mental health issues, suicidal ideation.
Yeah.
Things where they might have to talk a person down from suicide, or where they can stop a potential situation escalating to violence by having the skills necessary to relate to a person and understand where they're coming from.
Yeah.
Whether affected by medication, lack of medication, whether there's alcohol involved or drugs involved, or so. They can put things in a context, so there's a better chance of a good outcome rather than a negative one.
Do you think there's scope for people with psychiatric disability as well to do some work with police, people with disability, to hear from those who've gone through these lived experiences?
I think that hearing from somebody, interacting with police, so the police can get firsthand situation where that person isn't in full-blown psychosis or suffering a catastrophic episode from being post-traumatic stress disorder or something. So here's the person behind the mental health issue.
Yeah.
That, whatever that might be. This is who they are. They have a life. They do certain things. They interact in society and the community. Rather than that person that you only get to hear from when there's something seriously wrong, or sometimes when there's nothing wrong.
Yeah.
And the assumption is
There's an assumption there is.
that because there's a history, it must be because we're responding to that address.
Yeah.
Because with the police and ambulance, every address that they respond to is flagged. So if there's a person with mental illness and the police had a welfare check there or mental health claimsman involved,
Yeah.
it's flagged. So that police officer's then alerted.
Yeah.
So he has a pre-conceived idea.
Yeah.
And that might be based on previous visit.
And is that where that education and that specialised education and understanding, you think, would help? Where those pre-conceived ideas, maybe better pre-conceived ideas about, and educated ideas about how they might respond when they get there?
I think it's paramount.
Yeah. You've been involved with the Cognitive Impairment Diversion Programme. Can you tell the Royal Commission about your contact with that programme and what that programme has done for you?
Well, given that, in my, I didn't know anything about that. So that was a whole world of resources that I didn't know were available to me.
Yeah.
And that went from, everything from getting a diagnosis, seeing a neuroscientist.
Did they help you with that?
They did. Financially, as well as transport, as well as support to to fly through and go through what was a very long and arduous procedure, but. And then there was in the court system, everything from finding the legal representation, having support people sit in the court because I suffer anxiety. And when I get depressed or I get a bit manic, I can't sit still for a while. I go, especially when it could be a bad outcome.
Yeah.
And then it's all day, why stay? And all this. So someone's sitting there going, "Geoff, it's all right."
So this was the first time, this is 2019, is that right, that you get that kind of support in court?
Ever, ever. And it was, it was a whole different, it was an absolute, totally different perspective. Because people were communicating from the minute we walked in the door, from my support worker to the solicitor, from the solicitor to the prosecution, from the prosecution to the layman's throw. So everyone knew where we were at. Instead of, they always knew, and I was just sitting there.
You were sitting there, yes.
And.
I think in your statement, you talk about Michael. At the end of that that court case, the outcome on the day, obviously you were so stressed. Words were being spoken in the court that were just not computing with you, and that at the end of the day, it was a good outcome, and essentially you said to Michael, "What just happened?" And he explained to you what had happened. Whereas in the past, presumably, you got to the end of the day, and if you were experiencing those sorts of experiences because of your disability, you either walked out of the court, or you got taken back downstairs and out in a truck, and you worked it out when you got back to prison.
Yeah.
So is that how fundamental that supporting court through CIDP has been?
Yeah, it went from hearing what the magistrate had to say and going taking down, and then seeing this list of two minutes between bars going, "This is what just happened",
Yeah.
not understanding any of it, and getting on the truck, and then reading whatever you got and going, "I'm going to work this out", and then realising it doesn't matter if you want to appeal because you spend more time waiting for on remand than before, let's say you just stop it anyway. So the system's broken in that way too. But on this, I think I wasn't, I was overall, I was flabby. I was that I had witnessed something that was a good thing that had happened involving several groups of people that were funded by the government, that I believe that that funding should be not only kept on board, but most probably should further funding, and they should look at that even harder because it will save money in the long run.
Yeah.
Because if I had got up and walked out,
Yeah.
then you've got police officers looking for me. You've got the potential for a violent confrontation with them because they tracked me down. Then I end up in hospital, I'm on remand. It costs like $150,000 a year to keep someone in prison, so it's not cheap.
The CIDP's support and the funding for that, much less than all of that, kept you.
Stable and on board and focused for the period of time that I had to get. Stable and on board and focused for the period of time that I had to go to court.
Yeah.
And for the day-long episodes that we had to go through.
And it got to neuropsychological report, which was used in court, is that right as well?
And that was a benefit even further past court, it was um further um useful with the N D Os.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
So it was um with Plaid Stigott, um, Stride, um, took stuff out of that and applied it to, to my gear. Um, so it wasn't just that bit of money spent for that report.
For that time.
For one little issue and then thrown in the bin. It was then passed on to other government organisations, N D Os, Plaid Stigott. And then the other support teams have all been out. So we had a, a whole picture again, rather than little bits of Jeffrey.
Yeah.
All over the place.
Yeah.
And that's what we're starting to get through what Michael does.
Through CIDP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, so through that, we're getting um a database that's complete on, on the people that it's relevant to.
Yeah.
So that, a, and the good thing is because people like Michael, who, who, he communicates so well to different organisations. So he will go the distance and go, no, no, you've only got a bit of information. And we're happy to share the information they've got. So it doesn't have to be redone, you don't have to rehash it and relive it and go through it over and over. What, they just asked me, are you happy for us to share?
Share this information on your behalf as an advocate, so that's the advocacy that they're doing for you.
And, and.
Saves you the trauma of going through it all again, feeling like you said it a million times.
And, 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 and also gives you a voice because people, well, I can say what I want to say, but on that vibe.
Yeah.
Yeah, the police aren't happy, the hospital doesn't want me. But then when Michael arrives and says, listen, we've done this, we've done the reports, we're referring him on to, he's been involved in. And then they go, now, now it's believable.
That's right. He comes to them without a thirty-five page criminal history that's going to form assumptions, he comes as an advocate for you. Whereas if you walk to the police station and say, here's A, B and C, this is what I need you to know, different, totally different experience.
Straight out of their head.
Yeah, yeah.
Although not, don't, well, listen, don't want to pay attention. Uh, Mo, he gives me a voice.
Hmm.
They give me a voice, so.
Yeah.
That, that's very important to me. Which to me, I don't know if it might be what I'm overstating it, but when you spend as many years as I have trying to fight corruption within the system and even sometimes trying to fight that corruption within the very system that's, that's, that's system. Through admission, they're not even able to do something, just by admission, you're guilty, it's not advocating for that person yet. It's, it's refreshing to see that something new is on the horizon. That we can grow and grow and grow into what should be the future. Because more jails is not the answer, more police is not the subject. We need to be looking at what we can do to assist people who have these um situations in their lives.
Yeah.
Because not everyone has control, like, well, all have different levels of control in their lives and what happens to us.
Yeah.
And some of us need to have somebody guide us through and support us. And if we don't have that, we become even more sad victim.
Yeah.
And more broken, and that's attractive, so. So if they don't listen to people like that Michael and take on board what he's learning, what they're learning from people and what that, I'm sure there's many people like me out there.
Yeah.
Um, and take it on board and if want to change, then all it means is, is uh, he's basically doing their job.
Their work, yeah.
So, and, and, and he's saving um meltdown, he's saving the confrontation with the police. He's saving people from walking out of court and having first-hand lines served on. He's saving um people's lives, why, having a neuropsychologist's report done and then having that. You know, because N D Os didn't want to pay for it and they didn't, they wanted it, but they weren't going to pay for it. And so, so in, in, into government, or in a department or so, so. So even though we say, look at the money that's spent, look at the government organisations that saved by having that information and then being able to streamline my care.
Yeah.
Because N D Os required information, um, Stride required information. Um, and, and the courts wanted information, um. Solicitors required information to provide a reasonable um defence for you.
Yeah.
Or explanation as to who or what it was about and what was the more awful situation. So it wasn't, it was never about one thing. And if you followed the money trial, if you followed how that affected the whole scenario, um, you would see that that little bit of money um that's spent saves a fortune.
So we need you up at Senate estimates with Michael next time it's round. Timeing the cost savings to keep CIDP going and, and in fact more so to spread that change to the bigger institutions, to the mental health units of the police. So that, so that CIDP isn't doing their work, but is teaching them to do the work that consumers like you speak directly to the programme.
And, and those in-services will be, if you had in-services like involving the cross-section of. And then they knew um that that was there, because I'm sure that there are many people in mental health um units all around that have no idea about what, what's going on here and who they can call and what's available.
Yeah.
So they're not represented, so they're not, you know, and unless we get that information inside that organisation.
Yeah.
So that's people know, so that a nurse might refer a patient. Um, and we might save further court, court matters and that, but it can be resolved in the mental health unit.
Yeah.
And then it through some conversation with the court and the police and resolving that issue there. Whereas if you have someone sitting in the mental health um facilities and they're just waiting for the court to go and then you've got the court costs, you've got the magistrate, the police, you've got the ambulance, you've got all that stuff. And what we could do is say, we've got all of that person's information here.
Yeah.
And then that person is represented fairly across the board by these people, which is rightly so, given their circumstances. And we can deal with this a lot more efficiently and effectively. And then look at um what we can do to stop that sort of change itself.
Yeah. So Jeff, that comes to the end of the questions that I had for you, but as a wrap-up, I want to ask you whether there's anything finally you want to suggest or say to the Royal Commission, perhaps what you would like to see as a recommendation for the Royal Commission?
Uh, yeah, I would say, uh, or recommend, I, I, I think um the CIDP is an excellent part of people like myself to be represented, to have people on our behalf. And cost-effectively, we attack a problem that we have. And I think that's really, I don't identify with you today in some way and other people are identifying or coming forward. Um. The government needs to, 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 to fund CIDP, I believe, because it's cost-effective, saving the money in the long run, the taxpayers paying less money because we can identify issues that can be resolved amicably without having confrontation with the police, involving ambulance officers, dragging it through the courts. Um, we, we can have a process that has support networks there for people in those circumstances. And um instead of exacerbating the situation, we can resolve um and we can have conflict resolution rather than um back row and, and police involvement, court involvement.
So the, the savings are greater in the long run.
I, I would say, given the amount of people that are involved in one single episode.
Yeah.
Um, definitely, one hundred percent, this is a, a long-term savings for the government.
Brilliant, Jeff, thanks for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of Council assisting, can I thank Mr Thomas for his um pre-recording of that video with Mr Fogarty of Council? Uh, can we have a break before we commence the next session, please? Perhaps till twenty-five past ten Brisbane time?
Yes, certainly. We'll adjourn then for fifteen minutes.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
The Royal Commission is now in session.
Uh, Dr Melafont, we have Ms Coots and Mr Baker with us in the Sydney hearing room, so.
Thank you.
It's, it is over to you.
Thank you. And before I proceed to the um evidence of Ms Coots and Mr Baker, can I just clarify that the tailor who was present with Mr Thomas in, in that interview with Mr Fogarty is not the tailor, Buden will hear from this afternoon, is tailor from Stride. And the Michael who was present also in that interview is Michael Baker, who's on screen with us now. Thank you. Commissioners, the next two witnesses are Ms Janine Coots, A M, Mr Michael Baker. You'll find the written statement of Ms Coots at tab ten of tender bundle B two. Can I make one correction to that statement at paragraph thirty-five, and it is a relevant correction? The figures for the one July through thirty-one December twenty twenty year should be three thousand seven hundred and eleven supports to eleven hundred people. If I can ask that that statement be tendered into evidence, please?
Yes, and to be given which marking?
Eleven point three zero point one.
Yes, thank you, that can be done.
Thank you. You will find the written statement of Michael Baker at tab eleven of tender bundle B two. I ask to tender this statement into evidence and for it to be marked as eleven point three one point one. You'll also find an attachment to Mr Baker's statement at tab fifty-three of tender bundle uh D two. And I ask to tender this document into evidence and for it to be marked eleven point three one point two.
Yes, those documents can be admitted into evidence with those markings.
Thank you, we're ready to proceed with the evidence.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much, uh, Ms Coots and Mr Baker for coming to the Sydney hearing room to give evidence. Just to explain where everybody is, we tend to be a little scattered. Dr Melafont on the screen is in our Brisbane hearing room. Also in the Brisbane hearing room are Commissioners Atkinson and Mason, although I don't think you can see them on screen at the moment. And Commissioner McEwan, as you know, is with me in the Sydney hearing room. If you would each be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, who is to your right, and she will administer the informations to you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please both say yes, or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence that you shall view will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you for coming to the commission to give evidence. I'll now ask Dr Melafont to ask you some questions.
Thank you. If I might start with you, Ms Coots, could you state your full name, please?
Uh, Janine Coots.
And you provided a statement to the Royal Commission dated the second of February two thousand and twenty-one, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
And subject to the correction I just read into the record about the numbers for that July through December twenty twenty period, is that statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge and ability?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay. Ms Coots, are you the executive officer at the Intellectual Disability Rights Service, I D R S?
Yes, I am.
And have you been in that role since two thousand and eight?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Now, your statement sets out uh your experience and your qualifications, but they include being a general community member of the Guardianship Division of New, the New South Wales Civil and Administrative Tribunal, formerly the New South Wales Guardianship Tribunal, from two thousand, and that's from two thousand and two until the present time?
Yes.
Okay. And you have approximately twenty-four years working together with people with disability in their journey through the criminal justice system?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. And what is the I D R S?
Uh. So Intellectual Disability Rights Service, it's short I D R S, um, is both a community le- legal centre and a disability advocacy service. Uh, so, and the disability advocacy part of our service, a, a lot of that is um directly related to criminal justice work. I'm not sure whether you want me to go through detail about the centre, do you, or?
No, th- th- that's probably sufficient, but um it's reasonable to say, isn't it, that I D R S has delivered court support uh for people with intellectual disability in New South Wales courts since two thousand and four?
That's right.
Okay.
And we, and we can add that it does its origins to the Redford Legal Centre, historically associated with that splendid institution, the Law School of the University of New South Wales. Apart from that, we don't need to know anything extra.
That's right. No, no manifest bias there. Okay.
Yes, court support and police station support and um generally supporting people through their criminal justice experience.
All right. A- and is it correct to say that um the, the service intends to seek to, to fulfil the needs as far as it can um to facilitate um applications, um, sorry, assistance for people with cognitive impairment, cognitive disability through the criminal justice system?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Um, can I turn now to you, please, Mr um Michael Baker?
Yes.
Uh, your full name, please?
Is Michael John Baker.
And you've provided the statement dated the second of February two thousand and twenty-one?
That's right.
And is that statement correct and true to the best of your knowledge and ability?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And are you an advocate employed um by the I D R S in New South Wales?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And is that a, how long have you had that role for?
Uh, that commenced, that particular role commenced in July of twenty twenty.
Okay. And um where were you before then?
Uh, I was at I D R S and working on the cognitive impairment diversion programme.
Yes, and for how long were you working on that programme?
Uh, I started that role as a case manager in January of twenty eighteen.
Okay. Now, amongst your qualifications is a Bachelor of So- Social Science, Criminology and Criminal Justice. And you're about to commence another degree, is that correct?
Yes, I've commenced um a Bachelor of Criminology and Criminal Justice um this year. Uh, in an honours degree.
The honours degree. Yes, thank you. Okay. So uh from January twenty eighteen, you were uh the, the case manager in the cognitive impairment diversion programme, is that correct?
Yes, I was one of the case managers, yeah.
Yes. All right. Now, your statement sets out your industry experience. Um, but in, in short terms, it's included supporting people who have a primary diagnosis of being on the autism spectrum and people who are deemed to have complex behaviour or complex support needs, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
And from twenty oh, uh, twenty fourteen through twenty eighteen, you worked for Autism Spectrum Australia, so-called Aspect.
Yes.
In a variety of roles, is that right?
Correct, yeah.
A- and within that work, um, you came to do work with respect to positive behaviour support?
That's right.
Okay. And is it correct that it wasn't uncommon for the people you supported at Aspect to have dealings with the police and the court system?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Now, um, I'll ask questions of each of you as we go along, um, but if there's a particular topic you want to come in on, just give me an indication and I'll, I'll, I'll make that happen, okay? Uh, perhaps, Mr Baker, if I can start with you, can you just provide a, a brief summary of what the CIDP was?
So the CIDP was a di- a diversion programme targeted specifically at defendants of the local court who uh had a diagnosed or a suspected cognitive impairment. Um, uh, it aimed to provide the best possible opportunity for those defendants to um access diversion and, and participate in diversion opportunities successfully.
Okay, and?
That was by way of a, a section thirty-two order um via the court.
Okay. Okay.
Maybe just explain, sorry, maybe just explain what a section thirty two order is.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, so a section thirty two diversion order um refers to section thirty two of the Mental Health Forensic Provisions Act, um which allows a magistrate uh to make an order for a defendant on the basis of their mental illness or cognitive impairment, uh that they connect with community-based supports that meet their needs and um reduce the likelihood that they appear before a court again, rather than uh be processed uh at law um in in a way that is, yeah, punitive or punishing or results in a conviction.
Okay. Thank you. It was initially a two-year pilot programme, correct?
That's right.
A- a- out of two courts, two local courts, Penrith and Gosford?
Correct.
Okay. A- and ultimately is extended for a third year?
Yes, that's right.
But but finished up in June twenty twenty when funding was ceased, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Now, what was the role of the case manager in the CIDP?
Yes, uh, the the case manager role was um a holistic one. Uh, initially, uh, it differed a little bit uh in the two models. Uh, but the the case manager was responsible for working intensively with the defendant, the participant in the diversion programme, to um identify uh their support needs, um, help them communicate with legal aid or whoever their um solicitor might have been, so that they could understand the the legal process as much as possible and and make decisions around that. Um, we worked with them, not only in court but in the community, to help them access relevant support services like NDIS support services, um drug and alcohol, mental health, housing. Um, so it was a dynamic role, um and really tailored to meet the individual needs of um the individual person we were supporting.
Okay. I'm going to come to the two iterations of the programme shortly. But firstly, can I ask you, where did referrals to the programme come from?
Uh, so chiefly from court-based stakeholders, legal aid, magistrates, um uh, the court itself, so some registry staff, uh. But, you know, as we sort of developed um presence and and reputation, we ended up receiving referrals as well from the NDIS, rather the NDI, uh, NDIS service providers in the local region, um a whole variety of community-based services as well. Um, clients could refer themselves, family members could refer them, yeah.
Okay. And in terms of um the essential threshold for for referral, was that on the basis of a confirmed or a suspected cognitive impairment?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, all right. So, um. Just to get uh everybody oriented here, there was a the two-year pilot period period. And then it was extended to a third year, which was the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty financial year under a revised model. Can you explain to the Commission the the first model compared to the second model, please?
Sure. Uh, so the first model was um more of a a multi-agency model, I suppose. Uh, so the primary stakeholders in delivering the CIDP in the first model were IDRS as the case management service, uh, Justice Health as the the clinical and diagnostic service, uh, and Community Corrections as the uh monitoring service. In the second iteration of the model, Justice Health and Community Corrections were no longer a part of that model. The monitoring function that Community Corrections provided had been eliminated from that model. Uh, and while, of course, there was that um maintenance of a uh an important diagnostic and clinical function as part of the CIDP model, that was instead um uh we broke those assessments privately to a whole suite of clinicians rather than court-based Justice Health neuropsychologists.
All right. So so just with the the first model, uh, Justice Health were responsible for screening and intake, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And there was a neuropsychologist employed at each court who did the screening and assessment. And then the person was allocated to CIDP case manager, is that right? Okay. A- and under that first model, Justice Health provided the final report to the court as part of the application for diversion or as part of sentencing?
Correct.
All right. And CR, um, IDRS rather, um had input, that is authored a support plan covering activities undertaken and forthcoming within CIDB case, CIDP case management, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Now, I want to then turn to what you just said about um the monitoring function, and and I'll come to you, Ms Coots, about this in a moment as well. So that initial model had a monitoring function whereby Community Corrections um monitored compliance with that order. Now, um, was it your experience, uh, Mr Baker or Ms Coots, whoever'd like to answer this question, that that was used often or seldomly?
Um, that that was rarely used. I think it was used across both courts a handful of times.
A- and Ms Coots, did you see that particular function as being problematic?
Uh, yes, we we were never um in favour of that function, uh because the um diversionary order i- is meant to divert someone from the criminal justice system and being um monitored by corrections. And and the monitoring involved a a community corrections officer making a phone call to the service providers to basically to check um whether they'd been attending a appointments or complying with their their uh support plan. Uh, and and I guess one particular criticism we had was that it didn't involve any contact with the person uh subject of the order. So it and yes, a- and so it was, the magistrate could include it in an order if they chose to. Um, it didn't become something that was necessarily part of every um CIDP section thirty two order.
Right. A- and ultimately, um, the New South Wales Government decided to to get rid of that for the for the the new model, is that correct?
Yes, uh, yes, it it hadn't had a lot of use and uh the Corrections people didn't didn't feel it had a lot of utility either, I don't think.
Okay. A- and is it fair to say both um to you, Mr Make Baker, and to you, Ms Coots, that removal of that monitoring function was a welcome change from IDRS's perspective?
Uh, yes.
To us it was, yes.
Okay. So, Mr Baker, uh, I stopped you before, but I'm going to ask you now to s- explain the second model.
Um, yes, so the the second model uh uh operated so that IDRS and the CIDP case managers were the 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 core of that that model. Um, so we conducted um brief um screening to see if someone had a suspected or confirmed cognitive impairment. Um, so in that way, we determined eligibility for the programme. Um, if they did require a a clinical assessment, we made that referral and supported them to um attend and and uh get or will get or rule out a diagnosis. Um, of course, we continued to provide the the case management uh component of the programme. Uh, and we also assumed uh responsibility during that final year for the final court report um in conjunction with the neuropsychological or other clinical assessment that would sit with our report outlining the case management progress um and the support plan and support plan recommendations.
Okay. And what would IDRS do if a referral came to you, but it was, that person was deemed ineligible?
Uh, we would uh refer them on to somewhere appropriate. Um, so sometimes we had people refer to us whose um chief need was mental health, so we would refer them to uh the clinical nurse consultant at at the court or um refer them to an appropriate community service, just sort of a warm referral.
Okay. Um, you spoke of a a clinical nurse consultant being at the court.
Yes.
Uh, does that happen routinely at those two local courts? And is that continuing?
Uh, yes, as far as as far as I know, that's continuing. So the clinical nurse consultants at Gosford Court and Penrith Court uh sat um under the statewide court and community liaison service, so uh an arm of justice health.
Are there officers, people like that at other courts besides Gosford and?
Yes, there is, yes.
And why were Gosford and Penrith chosen?
Uh, I can't really speak to that. Maybe Janine?
Don't really know. I just, I'm only know that they were keen to have one metropolitan and one um regional court.
And by they, who do we mean?
The, well, the department, so the.
The government, is that what?
Yes.
Yeah.
Department of Communities and Justice.
Right. There weren't marginal electorates or anything like that.
Um, Mr Baker, in your statement, you you speak about um referral to other pathways, as you've just indicated, and you speak of the Merit Programme, M E R I T, what is that?
Uh, that's the magistrate's early referral into treatment uh programme, so that's specifically a a diversion programme really for um people with uh substance-related needs or issues.
Okay. Can can you tell me from your experience of the programme and let me know if I'm going, if I'm straying too far, whether um it has a p- a particular focus on the coalescence of people with cognitive disability and substance abuse?
Uh, I I wouldn't say it has a focus on that. Um. I would say that there's an acknowledgement um within Merit that cognitive impairment is, you know, it often proceeds or um is subsequent to substance issues. Um, but I wouldn't necessarily say that Merit, um, you know, works in in a way that um fully meets the needs of people with cognitive disability.
Okay. A- and one more question, um before I move off this this part. Um, are you aware of any um support service, like the IDRS, any support service which um is developed to assist First Nations people with cognitive disability in the criminal justice system with substance abuse?
Um, that's uh, no, I I'm not aware of any such service.
And Ms Coots?
No, I'm not aware of such a service either.
Okay.
Why, why are you smiling?
Just, it's just very specific, um, specific group that that would be dealing with and I think it'll be a long time before we have services for that cover that wide range of needs.
So, under.
Dr Melafont, sorry, could I just ask a question before you continue? Uh, on the assumption that only two court were chosen, so Gosford and Penrith, do you agree that they were high highest need areas, or would you have chosen other areas around New South Wales?
For me, working in that space in a direct practice context.
High need.
Definitely high needs areas, definitely. I can't speak to the other courts, uh, but definitely those two were high needs areas.
Yeah, I'd I'd agree with that. I think they they are high needs, but a similar level of need is in a lot of courts around the state. Um, yeah, so it's it's not, it's not special. Um, that that level of need exists right around New South Wales.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, now, uh, Mr Baker, under both models, clients needed to have or to obtain an expert report confirming the cognitive impairment, is that correct?
That's correct.
And were those reports presented to the court as evidence of the impairment and of the ways in which the disability may have affected thinking and behaviour?
That's correct.
Now, so and on top of that, did CIDP case managers prepare a report and support plan which linked the various reports and documents to the practical circumstances, needs and goals of the individual to try to address types of situations and behaviours which resulted in offending?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Now, um apart from um using an assessment report, being able to use an assessment report for a section thirty two diversion order application, how else was, how else could and did IDRS utilise those assessment reports in the course of the CIDP? Before either of you to answer?
So, the the diagnostic reports um became sort of a very central component to meeting the person's needs, not only in the criminal justice system, but certainly beyond that. So, uh, those same reports were used to apply for NDIS funding, um appropriate housing, uh, to uh gain access in residential drug and alcohol rehabilitation, um, to help people directly supporting them and other clinicians in their lives to better understand their needs and and how to support them. Uh, yeah, it was it was a key piece of information to provide continuity of support throughout uh all areas of their life.
Right. And Ms Coots, if you wanted to add anything into that, please do, but I specifically wanted to ask you how um such reports assisted with bail?
Uh, well, um, I guess the the as assessment report assists with bail, but but also the um support plan was was key to that, because um very often people don't, they come before the court and they don't have any support services, and magistrates sometimes feel they have no o- option but to remind the person in custody. Uh, so so the assessment report is important, but I I would say the support report and the organisation of supports probably has a bigger influence on the person achieving bail.
Yes. Uh, Mr Baker, do you agree with that?
Yes, definitely.
And so the.
So, sorry, how many magistrates are there sitting in criminal matters at each of those courts, Gosford and Penrith?
Uh, varied a little. I think at Penrith we had four or Gosford, I'm not sure, actually.
Probably a similar number.
Were the approaches of each of the magistrates in those locations similar once the programme became involved in some way?
Um, Chair, what do you mean by approaches?
Well, did that, did you find that your applications to the court were dealt with in a similar fashion? I'm not talking about individual decisions, but that magistrates understood what was being put forward, sympathetic to the programme, did it vary between magistrates?
Uh, it it varied at the start of the programme, I think, but as as we went on, um, that was less so. I think there was a a general approach to understanding uh the type of support we were providing and, um, yeah.
And a willingness to regard it as helpful to the process?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you again. Carry on.
You you've in fact received some feedback from magistrates about how helpful the programme has been, without naming names, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
All right. I just want to come back to the point we were discussing before, which is how you've got the assessment report and you've got the CIDP case manager report, and how these reports were able to be used by the client um outside the diversion. So, can I just summarise and make sure I've got them all down? Um, they helped with bail, they helped with sentencing if that was the route that was um ultimately undertaken. It would, they were used to um apply for access to services through the NDIS or to seek to increase funding through the NDIS. They were, they were used to help support other applications like housing, uh, disability support pension, pension and residential rehabilitation, is that correct? Okay. Uh, now, I want to ask you both, which of the two models do you prefer? And why? Ms Coots, would you like to go first?
All right. Well, from our point of view, we we preferred the second model. Um, it be- because we were involved in the initial referral and the screening, it gave our case managers an opportunity to be involved with the person from the beginning and and also to begin to develop a relationship with them from that early stage and to get to know. and, and also to begin to develop a relationship with them from that early stage and to get to know them very well. Uh, it we, there were, it also gave us options in relation to the type of assessment that um might be needed. Uh, so not a neuropsycholo- psychological assessment is not necessarily the best sort of assessment for every person with cognitive impairment. Uh, so we were, we were able to um broker different types of assessments uh depending on what seemed most needed and also to brief um the person who was doing the assessment about specific issues and needs that we wanted to be covered in those reports. Uh, so I, I guess that it, it, it was good to have continuity, I think, all the way through. Um, not, not that there were problems with the, the previous model in that regard, but we just found it easier to, to work with people. Um.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Baker, just picking up on Ms. Coots' point there about the continuity. You speak in your statement about there being one point of contact rather than three, which meant you could start working with clients earlier because you're involved before the diagnostic assessment was complete. So, so what did that look like in practice for, as an advantage?
Uh, so having uh referrals come directly to the IDRS case manager rather than have to kind of bounce through other parties and stakeholders just reduced the complexity of the program generally, which was great for obviously the court, which is complex enough and, and busy enough as it is, um but certainly for the clients we were supporting. Uh, we were just the face of the program and um they worked with us in a more streamlined way because we'd been with them from the start and we were responsible for each function.
Okay. And Ms. Coots spoke then about not always having to get neuropsychologists, but you could get a different type of report depending on what the circumstances called for. So might that be a psychologist's report? Is that right? Is that that one example?
Yes. Yes, that, that would be the main other alternative.
Okay. And what about occupational therapy?
Uh, so depending on the particular needs of the person, so that was really our core ethos. Um, so sometimes we had people refer to us that had a sufficient psychological and neuropsychological report. I can think of one gentleman in particular whose primary need in the, in the diagnostic sense toward um his diversion application and enhancing his support was actually an autism sensory assessment. So yes, that's one example um where we utilised uh an occupational therapist report.
All right.
I guess we also, so different psychologists might have different specialisations as well. So we could um, we could refer to somebody who was a specialist in intellectual disability and behaviour support or to someone who was a specialist in, in brain injury. And, and the other thing I might just mention is that just having one person to do the assessments at the court had the, will have the effect sometimes of creating a bottleneck. So being able to refer to a number of uh professionals for assessments um meant that we, that bottleneck was avoided.
Okay. And so that improved timeframes overall, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Baker, you do speak as to one of the advantages of the second program being the improvement of timeframes. Was, um, apart from the point we've just indicated, were there other aspects of the second program which helped make things move more quickly?
Uh, I, I just think that, um, again, the, the operational complexity was less so than in the first model because it was one um service responsible for um all aspects of the program.
Okay. And just a couple more points I want to take you to in your statement about the reasons for your preference for the second model. Uh, the first, as you say, assessments could take place in a more comfortable and less intimidating environment than the court. Could you explain that, please?
Um, sure thing. So criminalised people with cognitive disability um certainly find court a, a confusing and intimidating place, um hence um the need for a service like this. Um, but particularly sort of the diagnostic process, I think, can be quite um intimidating as well. And for that to be taking place at the court, I think, um probably has some implications and tie-ins with the criminal justice process that I don't think uh necessarily helpful. Um, so I think uh for our client group, being able to uh go through the diagnostic process off-site in a, in a safe space, a comfortable place, either the clinician's office, sometimes it would take place at our offices as well. Um, that enabled them to participate more fully in that process as well. And I would assume, you know, ha- have a um, a diagnostic report produced that is, probably has a little bit more efficacy as well.
Ms. Coots, do, do you agree with all of those points?
Yes, I do. Yeah.
And finally, on this uh topic, Mr. Baker, unless there's something I've for- forgotten in terms of the reasons you, you each prefer the second model. Mr. Baker, you state that the reports under the second model included a focus on their impairment and support needs in addition to diagnosis and defending, which made them fit for multiple purposes. Can you just give me a little bit of context so I can understand the, how it was that the second reports were superior in that respect?
Uh, what I'm trying to get at there is that because we were brokering out the diagnostic assessments to a number of different clinicians in the second model that were not court-based clinicians that had sort of a forensic um, uh, aspect to them, uh, I think that meant that the uh the, the, the reports kind of covered a broader area rather than just um the reason for the alleged offending. Uh, I think it was able to cover um the need for NDIS access, functional um challenges as well in a way that um gave the reports greater utility overall. Um, that would be my view. And, and the fact that the case manager was able to sort of um work uh with those clinicians and provide information to them about um our work with that person up until that point as well. Um, also enhanced um the usefulness of those reports in broader terms.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Coots, I want to come to the general approach of the CIDP and uh can you let me know if this is a reasonable summary? Is that the approach was a, a commitment to working for the best outcome for the person with cognitive impairment and supporting them to be actively involved in choices and decisions, which although takes time, is more likely to equip the client to be able to comply with the order and achieve real change? Is that the approach?
That, yeah, that's exactly the approach. Um, and more of a um based on the person's needs than a a program approach which is defined and where you can't really adjust to the individual's needs. So yes, I, I know, observation all the time of the staff was that they, they worked in that way. And uh, uh, one of the things we mentioned is that trust is a big issue often for people with disability in the criminal justice system. Um, they've often been let down by services and have long histories of of being let down and losing faith really and, and lack of trust. And so we think it's an important aspect of the work to, to build that trust again. And that was an important basis for people accepting services uh that, that we recommended to them and linked them with. And I, I think you can't underestimate that because many people have had many tries. Um, but I, I do think having that approach makes it much more likely that the person will persevere and that they will be able to, to trust a service provider. Um, yeah. I, I think it's important to say that disability services aren't always reliable. Um, they're not always person-centred. Um, and there often does need to be a bit of a, a bridge created so that that relationship will work. And, and particularly when someone has a reputation of a criminal background, uh, that might be a difficult for some disability services. Uh, so, yeah, so that working on that, the, the foundation that that relationship could be built on in the future was a really important part of the service, I think.
Thank you. Can I ask you to comment on, on this observation in Mr. Baker's statement, please? Um, many clients had reported feeling something was not right, but their involvement with CIDP was the first time they had con- a confirmed cognitive impairment and the extent of it, um citing one-third of the CIDP participants in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Is that your experience?
Uh, yes, it is. And I, I think you'll find there are, there's research that shows that many people with cognitive impairment who are tied up in the criminal justice system have been often diagnosed for the first time as they go into prison. So I guess what was happening here is it was moving one step forward. Uh, but the, the real advantage of it happening at this point, when you've got a case manager working with you is that somebody could help you to deal with that um and understand the, the meaning of it and the person then to be able to use that as part of their understanding of how they could move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, you say that CI, um, sorry, the IDRS does not insist on labels and that some of your clients felt like they were being labelled once they received a diagnosis. But instead, what you were seeking to do is frame the disability in terms of the client's individual needs. Ca- can you explain that?
Yes, so what I'm referring to there is the way we work with people, which is that extremely individualistic and humanistic way. Um, some clients who had a diagnosis, a diagnostic label or received a diagnostic label um really embraced that. Uh, and um that sort of became or was an important part of their identity and that's absolutely fine. Uh, other clients um didn't want uh to be defined by a diagnostic label. So we just made sure to respect that. Um, but across the board, whether or not they, they wanted to be seen as someone with a disability or not, we just treated them as individual human beings and respect, respected their individual wishes for um interaction, support, referral.
So the focus was on need rather than tethering it to a diagnosis?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay. Um, now, Ms. Coots, in the course of the program, sometimes court appearances were adjourned for a number of months. I- is that correct?
Uh, yes. So I mean, the, the court process took a long time in itself, on average, probably three to four months if you were seeking a section thirty-two order. Um, but some magistrates preferred to see the services put in place rather than receive a plan that says the service will happen in the future. And I, I think that, tha- that's the way that the staff worked was to try and put the services in place so that the magistrate could actually see that the person was complying with them, um, that they were uh perhaps even making a difference by the time um the person came before the court for the actual section thirty-two decision to be made. So I, I think, you know, the staff found that that was, and, and the solicitors that they worked in partnership with um, found that that was often reassuring to the magistrates considering making section thirty-two orders often for people who've been before them many times before and had not received a diversion order.
Okay, thank you. I want to take you to a um statement of Mr. Mr. Um, Michael Coots Trotter, which we received uh yesterday. And this is S T A T dot zero three two two dot zero 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 one dot zero zero one one. And, uh, sorry, the last four digits is a dot zero 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 one, and I want to go to dot zero zero one one. Think I've just made that quite difficult for the operator. Yeah. And actually, can we just go back uh two pages to, to nine, please? Dot zero 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 nine. Now, I think, Ms. Coots, you've had an opportunity to, to read um this statement.
Yes.
And just, I just want to ask you a couple of questions. Um, and.
I think this might require quite good eyesight to see what, what the pages actually say. So I'm not sure whether you want to refer to something specific.
Yes, thank you.
Is it possible to give me a paragraph number?
Yes.
I've got the statement in front of me.
I'm going to take you to thirty-seven. Um, and I'm going to take you to the, initially to the first three lines of thirty-seven up to the colon.
Yes.
All right. Now, just to put in context, connect to divert is a um possible program in development with, by the New South Wales Government, as we understand it. Is that your understanding?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. But what I wanted to ask you about is the concept of timeliness. So the pa- the paragraph reads, connect to divert, if adopted, is intended to increase CIDP's capacity so that more participants can be assisted. And then it says, and improve the timeliness of service delivery. Were you aware of any problems with the service, sorry, the timeliness of service delivery by I, DRS with, of the CIDP?
Uh, no, not really. So I, I don't think we knocked back anyone because we didn't have the capacity to take them on in the, in the whole history of the service. Uh, so, yeah, so, and, and I, I don't think delays in the court process happened because of any delays related to the work of the case manager. Um.
All right.
So not, not, not really. And actually, Michael and I were discussing this this morning and, and our estimate would be that the average time that CIDP was involved, so average, was about four months with, with a lot of people. But the court process itself often took um three to four months. Uh, so yeah, so I, I'm not a hundred percent sure what that refers to because, as I say, we never were over capacity. Um, we never brought on any delays in the process. Um.
Okay.
Yes, I, I will add that there were some people who um uh, uh, in our experience, for a long experience, um, a diversionary order can often fall through because of what happens after the court process. And that might be that things just don't work out between the service providers or there are new disasters in the person's life that uh throw things off course. Um, so for some people, uh, we would have stayed involved for a bit longer to make sure that their relationship with their support coordinator, for example, from NDIS was established and working, uh, because we don't want to see the fruits of all our earlier work fall apart um because there are problems with that. But that, uh, in our view, I mean, but I, I, I don't think that extended our involvement much longer and I don't think it affected timeliness for people who were actually in the program.
Mr. Baker, do you have any um comments you'd like to add or?
Um, no, I, I would agree with that and then just endorse that certainly for some people. Um, once they receive a diversion order, uh, they do require some assistance to, to implement that um and make sure that the services um contained in that order are, are functioning well for them. Um, and they're given a chance to, uh, yeah, for us to support them to make sure that they do.
Ca- can I just say, I, I think often in the criminal justice system, um, they, people can easily forget the impact of the cognitive impairment. So it's not the, the person still is going to have trouble with planning or with memory or with understanding or reading. And there are, there are just so many things that occur that will trip them up along the way. Uh, so the support, their support coordinator should be able to help them with some of that. Um, but we were focused on making the order work for the person, both in the planning of it, uh, the reporting about it and actually making it work. So just staying involved long enough to make sure it was on a stable path. And, and I, I just think it's, it is important to note, the criminal justice system often talks about disability but doesn't really acknowledge the impact of that disability on the person. But doesn't really acknowledge the impact of that disability on the person. And the, and why they need additional help, that. You know, you might say somebody else didn't do what they were told to do. Okay, but a person with cognitive impairment, there could be a hundred little reasons. Why things fell through that are not necessarily their fault. I think it's, it's just a very important understanding.
Thank you, Ms. Koots. I now want to take you to um Ms. Mel-, uh, Dr. Melafon, if I could ask a question. Um. Is it also true that um? In fact, as someone with a cognitive disability, is likely to take longer. To understand what is going on and to communicate uh what they want and what they understand. So efficiency is not perhaps the best measure. Time efficiency is not perhaps the best measure for someone with a cognitive disability.
Uh. I think that's a very good point. It's certainly not the most important measure. Because the, the efficiency may lead to a subsequent failure. Um. Because you, you haven't set, helped the person to be set up. Well enough.
Yep. Thank you. I want to take you back to paragraph thirty seven. Uh. Because what this paragraph does i- is set out. Um. The anticipated features of the connect to divert programme. Uh. If it's adopted. And I'm going to take you to each of them. And ask you whether or not that was a feature of the CIDP. Okay. So can we start with A and bring that up, please? I- in um, in your view, Ms. Koots, did. Under the CIDP, was there a service provider with appropriate expertise in working with people with cognitive impairment?
Uh. Yes, definitely.
Right. Uh. B, please. Did the provider accept referrals and conduct a non-clinical screening of defendants to determine. Eligibility and possible cognitive impairment?
Uh. Yes.
Um. Did the provider collect historical reports and other evidence of prior cognitive impairment diagnosis? To support applications for adjournments to court to have time. To develop a defendant's support plan?
Uh. Yes, we did.
Um. Was it, uh, uh, did it occur, sorry, did brokering private clinical assessments? Occur when needed under the CIDP?
Uh. Yes, they did.
Can I have C, please? Were diversion plans developed to respond to the defendant's needs? And to support defendants to contribute to the community safely?
Uh. Yes, they were.
May I have D? Did the service provider continue to focus on connecting the participant with the NDIS? And relative through relevant community based, based supports?
Uh. Yes, we did. And, and I'd just like to emphasise, a lot of the supports we connected people were um. Were mainstream supports, not, not always disability.
Okay. For more prolonged case management and coordination of the ongoing need of the recipient. Or the participant, rather, uh, was the participant supported to transition to the NDIS? And other relevant services to implement their support plan and exit from the programme?
Uh. Yes, that's true.
Can I have E, please? Did your staff prepare a court report with evidence of clinical diagnosis and support plan? To support a defendant's diversion application?
Uh. Yes, they did.
And was their pro-, uh, oh, sorry, the next paragraph, which is their progress will be monitored?
Uh. Yes, that's exactly what they did.
Right. So I'll just read that into the record. Was there. That is, the participant's progress monitored until they were comfortably engaged with appropriate support services?
Yes, monitored and supported.
Now, Mister Baker, in respect of the answers that Ms. Koots has just given with respect to paragraphs thirty seven. Through to thirty, thirty seven A through to thirty seven E, do you agree with her answers?
Yes, I do.
Now, Mister Baker, your statement sets out. That while the CIDP was envisaged as a short term intervention. There were some difficulties in transitioning clients to NDIS funded supporting. Coordinators and the reasons for this. So what was CIDP able to do for its clients in respect of this issue?
Uh. We were able to work with them intensively uh. And individualistically to find the right support coordinator. Um. Perhaps it was a matter of the participant's NDIS plan not having enough support coordination funding. Um. So we would work with them to address that, so sort of begin that um review or appeal process to, to garner more funding that was. Uh, that matched their needs more adequately. Um. We um. Did a lot of community engagement work to find appropriate organisations uh that could reliably. Provide support coordination services to, to criminalise people with cognitive disability in relation to the, the um. Whole uh suite of service systems, which oftentimes they rely upon. So the, the difficulty really sat with the notion that um. Oftentimes, this client group is involved in multiple service systems, as I mentioned earlier. Mental uh, mental health, drug and alcohol, the criminal justice system. NDIS, housing and homelessness, family and domestic violence. So for a support coordinator to be able to effectively. Work with that person to manage that range of needs, there certainly needs to be enough NDIS funding there for that. Um. And also that support coordinator um certainly needs to have a level of skill and experience to negotiate. Um. And coordinate uh that range of supporting services and the problems. Uh, that will ultimately arise, um, because I, I, I do just want to add that those many different service systems, while they all. You know, touch and, and get involved with uh people with cognitive disability, don't necessarily speak to each other. When they do, they don't necessarily speak the same language. Um. So that, that certainly requires a, a centralised person that is. Experienced enough and funded enough to, to manage, to manage that with and for the person.
Thank you, Mister Baker. Ms. Koots, do you agree with those comments by Mister Baker?
Uh. Yes, a hundred percent.
Um. Now, Mister Baker, in, in your role as case manager, did you have occasion to see clients get. Community-based or diversion orders? Were they otherwise pretty likely to get a custodial sentence?
Absolutely. I'm confident that that's the case. Um. Not in the least because magistrates and solicitors. Indicated that in individual matters. Um. So yes, I'm confident that that's the case.
Okay. Now, again in your statement, you speak about over time observing a real change in the way that. People in the court system responded to people with cognitive impairment. And you already spoken to the chair a little bit about this, and you observe changes in behaviours and practices. In magistrates, lawyers, court staff, court staff and police. I want to ask you, though, what was something that stood out for you in respect of your client's response? The participant response to the CIDP? And. Can, can I just touch on this? Ms. Koots, you've picked up on this already. Um. Mister Baker's point that clients appear to have increased trust and participation in the legal and justice process. Was that a particular feature you observed, Mister Baker?
Uh. Absolutely. I think uh because uh the clients had um. Intensive, humanistic support uh throughout the criminal justice process at each stage. So whether that's interacting with. Their solicitor, um liaising with the registry staff, uh, understanding what's going on in their court matter. Um. Having someone uh. Sort of co-design and co-produce a support plan that works for them, so that the magistrate uh and, and the court can understand. Um. What that person's needs and, and perspective of their needs really is. Um. So yes, I think because of that. Um. Process where the person, the person is really centralised, um, not only in the. The criminal justice aspect of the case management, but uh certainly their disability supports and, and their wider supports as well. Uh. I feel that, I feel confident to say that clients um. Developed a greater level of. Understanding and trust of the support service ecosystem and including an understanding of the criminal justice system. And I think that there was a positive feedback loop, I think is the best way I can phrase that. Between that sense, that, that experience for the client, and also the court. Uh, and court stakeholders better understanding the needs of the client. So, yeah, I would describe that as a positive feedback loop.
Hmm. And so your statement speaks about observing that. Clients left the programme with a greater capacity to meet their own needs by learning where and how to seek. Support and to self advocate. Ma- Ms. Koots, is that something you would agree with?
Uh. Yes, definitely. Um. I, I think um one of the features of the way that we. Thought was important to um, to do this work was, was to build a person's capacity and. And a big way of doing that was to involve them in the decision-making. Too often, in court sort of processes, decisions are made for people. Um. But the more somebody can learn, weigh things up and make their own decisions and have their decision respected. Um. I, I, I think that makes a very big difference to how the person goes forward. Um. And, and to their skills to cope better and do better.
Thank you. And Mister Baker, you um observed a difference in families and other informal su- supports, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what was that?
Uh. So because of the way we worked, a, a holistic way, um, oftentimes we were. Um, involving the person's chosen community uh in, in their support planning. So that might be a partner, that might be family, that might be a good friend, whatever that person or, or people was for them. Um. And, you know, sort of towards the exit stage of the case management pipeline. Uh. We often received positive feedback from partners and families to say, um, you know. Things are so much better at home with this person now, or I understand their needs more and uh, you know. We found through the support of CIDP an appropriate service that i- is meeting that person's needs and. Taking, you know, various financial, emotional, psychological pressure off, off the family unit, for example. Um. And, yes, yes.
If I may say so, tha- tha- these are important observations, but they are impressionistic. Was there a formal evaluation of the programme in terms of its goals, its outcomes, whether it could be. Whether, we live in a world where measurements count for a great deal, even if measurements are entirely inappropriate, which is. Quite often true of the way in which the legal system is approached, particularly by bodies like the Productivity Commission. But we'll put that editorial comment to one side and just ask whether there was a formal evaluation and if so, what were the results?
So there, there was a formal evaluation. Um. Certainly in that evaluation, a lot of the positive sort of. Feedback came from clients and from families. Um. That. The evaluation has been in some ways controversial. Um. So.
Well, can I just, uh, where, where do we find it? I don't want to, I don't want to divert a lot of time, uh, just to know where it is.
Yes, so it's on the um, the website of the Department of Communities and Justice.
So that was the department that carried out the evaluation.
That, that's right.
That's fine. Well, well, I'm sure.
Were they, um, they contracted an organisation to carry it?
Well, Dr. Melaphon may well be coming to that either today or tomorrow, but I just wanted to be clear that there is some kind of evaluation. Okay.
We, we are indeed going to come to that in, in later evidence, but I do want to speak about data whilst we're here because. Um. Mister Baker, at paragraph thirty seven. You say that um IDRS has not seen the final. Data produced by the Department of Community Justice in relation to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year. I just clarified this with you. Is it the case that in that third year, IDRS kept a significant amount of data?
Uh. Yes, that's right.
Okay. A- and that was as a result of the change in model and IDRS were given greater data um keeping. Functions. Is, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's exactly.
Yes, and, and we developed a specific database to collect that information, so that, that hadn't been there until the third year.
Yes. A- and so, so in those first two years, it was just a spreadsheet that you were asked to keep? Is that right?
Uh. Yes, that's right. Each uh stakeholders to justice, health, community corrections and IDRS kept separate. Forms of data that correlated with our function in the programme.
Okay. A- and Ms. Koots, is it your opinion that the data kept in the third year on the database? Um. Was much superior to the data which had been earlier kept, kept earlier?
Uh. I, I don't know that I'd say it was much superior. Um. Because we had more control of it and. And we understood the database. Um. It was certainly much clearer to us than the data from the previous years had been. So, so, yeah, we, we could draw a lot more from that information than we had been able to in the two previous years.
Uh. Thank you, Ms. Koots. So just coming back to you, Mister Baker. So am I correct in saying that um the data kept by. Um. Your service in, for the last year has been provided to the department?
Yes, that's right.
Together with your views on some qualitative analysis?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And at this stage, you haven't seen how that has been analysed and don't know how or to whom that might be presented, is that right?
Uh. That's right. I, I don't know how it's going to be analysed in the end. I did have um. Some back and forth with the department when I provided that raw data to talk about um. How that would be used, but I don't know what decisions were made in the end or what that will look like.
Okay. And so if that.
Explain that the, the final, what we mean by the final data is. The data that's been put together about the whole of CIDP over the whole period. We, we don't know how it's been put together. Um. And what the combined findings are. I mean, we, we have some knowledge of the early stats. Um. But we, we don't know how that's presented, no.
Okay. A- a- and if that analysis of that twenty twenty data hasn't in fact been finalised. Is that something? That um you would like to be able to see and provide feedback on before it's finalised?
We, we have provided a lot of feedback along the way. Um. So yes, of course, we would be able, we would like to see the final result, but um. Yeah. And, and I'm sure we will at some point.
Mister Baker, do you have any comment in respect of whether you'd like to, to see? And provide feedback on the government analysis before it takes final form, if that in fact hasn't already happened?
Um. I mean, yes, I would, I would certainly be open to that.
Okay.
You've, you've had a final form in the sense that I assume you've been told that funding terminated for this uh. A programme as of when, mid two thousand and twenty.
That's correct.
Did you get reasons?
Um. The. I, I think that the department had genuinely been trying to put enough money together to keep it going. Um. And, and they have the plan to put a budget bid in for the, something like the C to D that was mentioned there. Um. But the, the main reason that was um given to us for ending was really that. Was the tight budgetary situation in, as a result of Covid. So that, that was the main reason put to us for not being able to extend it until. There was some further decision about the new model.
All right. And I'm sure at due course, we'll hear about what the cost of the pro- of the programme was and so forth. So we'll get that in.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask you a couple more questions about data, Ms. Koots, and, and then I'm going to ask for a five minute break and. Thank you. I'm just going to ask you a couple more questions about data, Ms Coots, and then I'm going to ask for a five-minute break and for us to return. Was that baseline data at the commencement of the pilot against which the results of the project could be compared to?
Not, no, not that I'm aware of. So, so something that would have been very good to know was what the level of diversion in the courts that we were operating in was already, but we, we weren't able to, to get that information. So that, that would have been a very useful comparator for us to have. But as far as I know, the department didn't have that comparator either for people with cognitive impairment.
Okay. Not having baseline data, does that present a challenge for an organisation like yours when you're trying to get funding continued?
Yes. So what, one of the points I, I've made in my submission is that we think there's a, there's a, a data gap there that really in, information about people with cognitive impairment is, is not routinely collected. So it's, it's very hard to, to know how many people with cognitive impairment are, are going through the courts or even, even in the police database at this stage, that data is not collected either. So, so that, yes, that, that lack of collecting data that would give us some baselines is a problem and it would be great if there was data kept.
Have you ever experienced the situation when applying for funding to continue for a project, not necessarily the CIDP, but in general? Where what's been put against you is you haven't been able to demonstrate sufficient improvement or progress as a lack of having a baseline, as a consequence of a lack of having baseline data in the first place?
I haven't personally had that experience. But I, I think, you know, it's a recent trend really that funding is, is so short-term. So this, to me, this is an emerging issue of the last five or 10 years that that you have to justify certain criteria so quickly.
Okay. Can I ask you, Mr Baker? One of your recommendations for change is, is not having just short-term pilot programmes. Why do you recommend that it be longer?
I think that it inevitably with these types of programmes that are engaging with various complex service systems and certainly a client group that can have rather complex lives and needs. It, it takes a while to, to set up, to, to build buy-in from the various stakeholders, including the court-based stakeholders. So that everyone understands the, the parameters of the programme to demonstrate momentum and, and reputation and effectiveness. I think that can take, yeah, some time. So when, when you're on this sort of timeline of two years to try and achieve, you know, quite significant outcomes, that sometimes can be, I mean, that, that is extremely challenging. So I, I really felt sort of by two and a half years, we've, we've really arrived, you know, we, we had a reputation, all the local services and the courts knew what we were doing, how we were doing it and had competence in us. And certainly the, the level of referrals from the broad variety of agencies we were receiving referrals from stood to that. So, yes, I think perhaps that answers your question, but I think
It does. Ms Coots, do you agree with that?
I, I do, and I, I think it's, it's such an investment in getting to that stage that it's, it's a real shame to cut something off when it's, it's just reaching its, its peak perhaps. And, and I think the other frustration is that particularly in courts, there's almost an expectation that you won't be there for long. So it, it stops people in the court system from investing and relying on your service for a while until they're satisfied, oh, you're actually okay and you'll be here longer than two years.
Thank you. Chair, do you mind if we have a, just a five-minute break, please?
Yes, we'll have a break until your time, it is eleven fifty, about time twelve fifty.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr Millipont.
Thank you. Mr Baker, can I take you please to paragraph forty-five of your statement at sub-paragraph H? Now, paragraph forty-five is where you set out your recommendations to the Royal Commission. And H specifically speaks to a recommendation that there be better and more expansive residential and outpatient alcohol and other drug rehabilitation services adapted to be accessible for people with cognitive disability. We, we've touched on this a little already. How, how significant do you see the need for this is?
I see, I see that as crucial. So I think approximately fifty percent of the CIDP client cohort over the life of the programme had both a mental health and substance use comorbidity. I can't recall off the top of my head what percentage was for clients who only had a substance use comorbidity. But I think that earliest statistic is significant. For a lot of people with cognitive disability, you know, they, they don't necessarily have the support systems around them or even perhaps the, the cognitive skills and ability to sort of engage in some of the modules that these type of residential services expect people to be able to manage. So to me, knowing that alcohol and substance use issues have particular significance for people that have cognitive impairment, not, and, and you know, can also contribute to cognitive impairment, I think it's really important that services are able to meet their needs, particularly in residential settings. Often magistrates would understandably like some of the CIDP participants to demonstrate participation in a residential rehab service, but those either weren't available, meet the needs of our clients or there were so few beds, or the, the timing just didn't work with their court matter, so it wasn't able to go ahead. But the chief, the chief reason is that, yes, these services just don't really exist.
Can I take you to Jay, please? And you recommend specified provisions within the Drug Court Merit and Custodial Alcohol and Other Drug Programs be adapted to be accessible for people with cognitive disability. What's the gap you're seeing there?
That substance use issues are a huge problem for people with cognitive disability involved in the criminal justice system. And that while there is on the surface a number of referral pathways and avenues that are court-based and, and community-based for people with substance use issues, those are not effectively adapted for our client group, people with cognitive disability. They're just unable to meet their needs.
Thank you, Mr Baker. Ms Coots, can I take you please to page six of your statement, paragraph nineteen. Now, now here you touch on a project called the Community Justice Programme, which commenced in 2005 and it's New South Wales government-funded. Can, can I ask you whether you have noticed any difference in terms of what you're seeing with respect to the Community Justice Programme since the introduction of the NDIS?
Yes, so looking back before the introduction of the NDIS, there was a very, this was a very well-established service with a well-established pathway for assisting people who were leaving prison. And it, it provided a range of services, including casework, but also, most importantly, accommodation options for people with cognitive impairment leaving prison. And that, that pathway is no, is just, well, it's not clear at all now compared with, with that time.
And Mr Baker, do you have any observations on that topic?
Yes, when I commenced as a case manager with CIDP in January twenty eighteen, it was clear that CJP was dissolving in its current form. So at that time, a lot of the clients that I was personally providing case management to were CJP transitional clients. So their NDIS plans, I recall at that time, had provisions for clinical and therapeutic supports, direct supports. But I recall at that time, CJP, the state, was still providing for their housing and accommodation needs. But once that portion of the NDIS plan, oh, once, once that portion of their support was converted to an NDIS model, so supported independent living and what have you, I, I haven't had much or any real interaction with CJP since then.
All right, thank you. Ms Coots, I want to take you in a, in a moment to the Justice Advocacy Service, which you start to speak about in your statement at paragraph twenty-six. But before doing so, I just wanted to clarify something that was said before the break. In respect of the formal evaluation of the CIDP, it was only with respect to the first iteration of the model, is that correct?
That, that's right. It was conducted within that first two-year period.
Thank you.
It didn't cover the third year at all.
Thank you. Now, moving then on to the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, so the evaluation that was conducted by Westwood Spice didn't deal with the third year. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, thank you.
Possibly still assessing. Sure.
Thank you. All right. Now, in your statement, you speak about the Justice Advocacy Service and of adopting a prior service model, that is, the Criminal Justice Support Network Model, extending the client group to young people and adults experiencing cognitive impairment. And you set out, excuse me, sorry. What that service, that is, the Justice Advocacy Service does is to provide services to victims, accused persons, defendants and witnesses, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And what occurs, or at least part of what occurs under that programme, sorry, the funding allowed for enough JIS staff to be located across regional and rural New South Wales?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, that was a change.
Yes, okay. And it provided for analysis of the training needs of police, court staff and legal practitioners.
Yes, that, that was one of the specific requirements of, of the, of the service yet.
Okay. Now, IDRS were successful in tendering for funding for two years from twenty nineteen to June of this year. At this stage, has a decision been made about whether your funding for JIS will extend beyond June twenty twenty-one?
No, there's no decision made at this stage. And just to add to that, there, there has been an evaluation done of the JAS service, which has only just been finished. So I, I understand that that's part of the consideration.
And, and that evaluation, is that the Ernst and Young evaluation that we read about in Mr Coots' trotter statement yesterday at paragraph forty-three? Is that the state, the evaluation where you're referring to?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. But you, you haven't actually seen that evaluation?
We, yes, we have. We, we saw drafts of it and had the opportunity to comment on the drafts. And we've seen what we understand to be the final draft, but my understanding is that it's not public at this stage.
All right, thank you. What does it mean for your service to be here in, like, February and still not knowing whether you're going to have funding for JIS beyond thirty June twenty twenty-one?
Well, it, it's very difficult. I'll just note that already we have people booked in for court support in July. There are about sixty people who've, who've already got court dates, who are expecting us to support them at that time. So I guess that's just an indicator of the difficulty of not knowing at this stage. And, and of course, there's the staff are beginning to look elsewhere because they're uncertain about having, having positions beyond June. But, so, so that's a great concern too, because there's a big investment in building the skills of those staff and in those staff building the services in so many areas. So, so it's, yeah, it's a threat of big loss, really.
Okay.
Because the, the service has been around for so long, so since two thousand and four in a lot of areas, but not across the whole state. So it, it's a bit like we said with CIDP, you know, we're just really hitting our straps, particularly with Covid in the backgrounds, which closed courts for a good period, meant that we couldn't be in person with clients for quite a big period as well. So it's been an extremely disrupted two years. And, yeah, we, we are feeling like we are hitting our straps now and it would be very sad to have it end. And, but it, it is a service that's been around for a long time and people will miss it. The system relies on it to a very large extent and certainly people with cognitive impairment rely on it.
So my, my next question will help the commissioners understand what it is the JIS provides. So if I can take you to paragraph thirty-five of your statement. And there you say in a six-month period, one July through thirty-one December twenty twenty, JIS has provided three thousand seven hundred and eleven supports to eleven hundred people with cognitive impairment. What, we'll just take that screen down because that number's been corrected, please. What, what, what's the, what equals a support in those numbers?
Well, what we're actually counting is, is an occasion when a justice advocacy support person was present at either a police station or a court or a legal interview with a person with disability. Or, or the, and the other category is being present in a correctional centre for someone who's participating by audiovisual link into a court hearing and speaking with their solicitor. So, so what we're actually counting there is those occasions. But there's a lot more that goes into a support than just being there with the, the client. So for example, we, we call people a couple of days before they're due to go to court because we know that a lot of people get warrants because they haven't turned up at court because their disability meant that they either weren't organised to get there, they've forgotten it. Yeah, so, so there, there are lots of things, there's lots of problem solving on the way through, maintaining contact with the person's solicitor and in a lot of occasions, trying to link people to, to services, particularly if they're in remand.
Can I ask you too, does the service provide support to, to victims within the criminal justice system? Is that right?
Yes.
So, so what does it do in that respect?
So in that respect, what we'd hope to do is be at So in that respect, what we'd hope to do is be at the police station with the victim so that they can have assistance to make a statement to the police. And then depending on the severity, it might be over a period of two years, we're involved with them in dealing with the officer, the, goodness me.
DPP?
Yes, that's right. Being involved with them to help with communication in that area. Being with them in preparation for court and being with them throughout the trial. So we're just aware of one case where we had a three-week trial on recently where we were sharing that between staff and volunteers so that there was someone there with the person the whole time.
And is that assistance sometimes in partnership with the Witness Assistance Programme?
Yes, that's right. Because the level of support of witness with cognitive impairment needs is often greater than they're able to provide.
Okay. And is that assistance provided in all levels of courts, not just local courts?
Yes, that's right.
So, tell me if I have this fairly summarised. Your service tries for somebody with cognitive impairment not to be alone in their journey through the criminal justice system, is that a fair statement?
Well, it's more than being, not being alone, it's not to be disadvantaged by their disability as they go through the criminal justice system. So, yeah.
And the funding that you're waiting to hear about, that's for victim support, defendant support, suspect support, witness support, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Well, all of it.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I want to take you, please, to paragraph 36 of your statement.
Yes.
So about, it can come up on the screen. Thirty percent of the people using JIS services are First Nations people. So is that, say, for that period of six months, 1 July through 31 December, we're talking about 330, 350 roughly?
Yes.
Taking your figure of 1,100, okay. And then you say, Aboriginal engagement worker is crucial to building collaborative links with First Nations community organisations. Do I take that to mean you have one and one only Aboriginal engagement worker?
Yes, that's right, although there are three of the justice advocates who are Aboriginal people.
Okay. Would you like to have more if funding could be provided?
Well, I think the funding is not the problem there. We would like to recruit more staff, First Nations, from First Nations people. So it's not, and it would be very helpful to have another Aboriginal engagement officer, but we would like the, you know, a good proportion of the frontline staff to be Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander people as well.
Now, apart from the benefits that your Aboriginal engagement worker brings directly to your clients, what does that work also bring to the other staff at the service?
Yes, so the role of the Aboriginal engagement worker, who actually was a CIDP case manager before he came into this job, is to build the skills of the staff to work effectively and culturally, in a culturally safe way with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. And that's a big part of the role. And another important part is that he's actually, he's reaching out to Aboriginal organisations and trying to establish trust with those organisations so that they can use our services and we can help people to use their services. So that's another big part of the role. Another task that he's had is to work to review our volunteer training and volunteer recruitment and to work with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people to undertake that review. And we're working with a group of, a group on the North Coast to pilot our training, first training that's specifically targeted for Aboriginal volunteers. I didn't mention before either, we also have a pool of casual, casual staff who provide support at police stations. And 25% or 20%, I think, of those people recruited for that job are Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander people. So, yeah. So we are trying to, his job is to help us to, in all aspects of our service, become a service that's acceptable and effective for Aboriginal people specifically.
Thank you, Ms. Coates. Can I take you, please, to paragraph 54 of your statement? And you speak here about the changes to legislation in New South Wales in respect of mental health and cognitive impairment forensic provisions. And I just want to clarify something said in your statement. At the last, the last sentence in paragraph 54, you say, in your view, while the new legislation brings some welcome clarification, it will not address the practical barriers to diversion that currently exist in New South Wales. Can you tell me if I'm reading this correctly? The practical barriers to which you refer there are those set out in paragraphs 55, 56 and 57 of your statement?
Yes, that's, that's correct. So that is that really without a diversionary service available in the court, it's up to the solicitor to do all the work to put a section 32 application together. And in the very small amount of time that most criminal local court lawyers have, that's a huge barrier to people achieving diversion. So, so the legislation wasn't the key barrier and isn't the key barrier now. It's really having the practical support for the legal representatives to put the evidence together and to satisfy magistrates that it will make a real difference and that it's safe.
Thank you, Ms. Coates. Can I take you now, please, to paragraph 64 of your statement? And this is where you set out recommendations for change. Just want to pick up on a couple of them and ask you to clarify. So 64D, please.
Yes.
And here you recommend that the New South Wales Police Force should establish disability liaison officers equivalent to their liaison officer positions for youth and LGBTIQ. Can you expand on that for me? Why do you recommend that?
I think that positions like the mental health officers and the youth liaison officers make a big difference to the pathway of people in the criminal justice system. For example, having options of cautions might be an appropriate option to avoid people unnecessarily coming before the court, people with cognitive impairment. And I'll just provide an example of that. A man who left his group home, went for a walk, which was not an unusual thing to do, but he was later than usual coming back. The police were called to search for him. They came in numbers and they came with a dog. They found him, but didn't approach him in a safe way, really. He had a phobia of dogs and he kicked the police dog in all this process. He was very worked up. And he was, he was charged with assault on the dog and had to go through the whole process of court. And that, to me, seems, there should be some work done about, in the police force, about instances like that where a person shouldn't be charged because their disability has contributed in such a way and the circumstances to the, to the getting arrested. So, and I've mentioned also in my submission that there's, we find there's increasing criminalisation of people in group homes because police are often called to incidents, and that's fair enough. But then people are sometimes arrested and sometimes get AVOs made against them, which they have no way of understanding or adhering to. So I guess what I would, I think one role for disability liaison officers would be to get, to build the understanding within the police force about cognitive disability in the same way that understanding's being built about people with mental illnesses. There can be experts in the force who can advise about these sort of situations and contribute to training and just to build, build the knowledge and build the understanding in the force so that there, there's a wider range of options open.
Okay. And so you, you would recommend that the New South Wales Police Force have, in addition to their mental health liaison officers, that there are specific disability liaison officers, is that correct?
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful and I think it would lead to some improvements in the way that the police deal with people with cognitive impairment. So training is part of that, but I think there need to be people within the force who own that area so that there can be, you know, big steps forward made.
Okay. Ms. Coates, I've got about three or four more minutes of questions to ask you, then I'll hand over to the commissioners. Can I take you to paragraph 64E? And you refer there to a bail assistance line, which is an after-hours service. That, to police who are considering granting conditional bail to a young person who can't be released because they can't meet their bail conditions. To your understanding, that bail assistance line is currently just for people under the age of 18?
Yes, so it's specifically for, for young people, yes.
And is it something that you see as a good thing and perhaps something worthy of expanding beyond people under the age of 18?
Yes, I think it would well meet the situations that we often see in police stations when we're supporting people there, is that the police, it's a bit like in the courts, that because the person doesn't have support, because they don't have accommodation, because they don't have any services, then the police feel that they, they almost need to hold them in custody because, well, maybe for other people's safety, maybe for their own safety, they don't feel that they can let them go into exactly the same circumstances because they'll probably be get back again very soon. But so, and often it's in that crisis situation that the police do decide to keep somebody in custody until they go to court. So there aren't any alternatives to jail if the police or the magistrate don't feel that they can release somebody into the same circumstances they were in before. There's no quick response on the service front usually to avoid the person going to prison. So, and, you know, I think CIDP demonstrated that when they were able to put together services, a lot of people had successful bail applications. So there's a need for a flexible bail service for people with cognitive impairment that can respond quickly so that people don't have to go to jail in the first place or be kept in the cells for days.
All right. Now, I just want to come to the last topic, which is the decision to cease funding. And as we know, the funding ceased 30 June 2020. Is it the case that even up until June, you were meeting with the department about seeking to advocate to try and see if funding could continue?
Is this about CIDP?
Yes, I'm sorry, CIDP, yes.
Yes, we were.
Okay.
And that's because, well, that's because my understanding is that they were trying to, they were trying to be able to keep service going while the new proposed service was put up for funding. So, so efforts were made up until the last minute to enable that to happen, as I understand it.
And your understanding as to who were making, who was making those efforts?
Well, the people in the department were making those efforts, but I understand supported by the director.
Can I take you, please, to just one document? And this goes back to last year, and it's nsw.0033.003.002. While that's coming up, Ms. Coates, can I just ask you, what were the key reasons you were, you were given for the CIDP not continuing beyond 30th of June?
So the key reasons why it couldn't be carried over until the department put up its new proposal for funding. Key reasons given to us was the tight budgetary situation due to the impact of COVID. And this, this was in the midst of the worst part of COVID in New South Wales.
Yes, so did the closure of your programme during COVID make it harder for you and your clients?
So once we knew that the service was going to close, yes, it made it a lot harder, partly because it was difficult to meet with people, but also the courts were closed for some period and the courts were dealing with a lot of matters by long adjournments. So a lot of matters were adjourned beyond when the service was closing. But the staff worked extremely hard against all those odds to try and get evidence together for section 32 diversion for pretty much every client before the 30th of June. And then because we had Jazz, we were able to pass those clients on to the Jazz service for support, getting to the, to the court hearing, so supporting them through the court processes.
But was the, was the level of support that Jazz were able to provide the same as that CIDP was able to provide?
No, so CIDP had already done all the CIDP specialist work and there would have been more work for them to do, but Jazz was able to provide the support to, to take the person through the court process and further discussions presumably with their legal representatives.
All right. Now, I just do want to take you to this document now, which is a New South Wales Government Communities and Justice Record, which have been provided. And this records a meeting, which was held in the latter half of 2020. I just want to take you to a couple of dot points and see if you can assist me with context. So, operator, please, the, the fourth and fifth.
I just want to note that I haven't read this thoroughly because I got it five minutes before we walked in here.
Yes, that is noted, and maybe that you'll be able to take this question on notice and come back to us. If I can just take you, please, to the second page, so we're at triple zero two, and take you, please, to dot points four and five.
Yes.
Okay, so is it, DCJ, that's the department, indicated there may be a possibility of reprioritising funds to augment Jazz in the short term while a proposal in the short term while a proposal is put to government regarding a long-term option. And that IDRS and CID agree to explore a time limit addition to Jazz as an option to support existing CIDP clients from July through December twenty twenty. And then can I go down the page please, under the heading actions and next steps? And the first dot point, which reads IDRS and D C J will assess what stopgap arrangements can be put in place between now and the consideration of the New South Wales budget?
Yes.
And, and tell me if it's too difficult just looking at this document now. Do you know what this stopgap arrangement was or was intended to be? Or is it something you'd like to think about further within the context of the full document?
Yeah, I think I'd need to read the full document to comment on that, really.
We might be asking the wrong people, Dr Melaphon, if this is a document emanating from the Department of Communities and Justice.
Um.
Sure whether it's minutes of, of the meeting or.
Yes, it's, it's minutes, oh, well, stop points rather. And in any event, we'll, we'll come back to you that, to come back to you with that after you finish your evidence to see if we can get some additional context from that. Commissioners, that's the end of my questions, please.
Thank you very much. I'll ask commissioners if they have any questions. First, Commissioner Mason, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Atkinson?
There's just one thing in that document that I think we need to correct. I understand it's not your document, but since it's now before us, on the first page, you're familiar with the people from CID, Ms Coots?
Yes.
And it's Justine O'Neill, not Justice O'Neill.
Yes.
They didn't have, CID didn't have the advantage of a judge assisting them in this.
Oh, no, well picked up.
Thank you.
Every time I type Justine, my fingers write justice because that's, that's what I type most often. And I, I didn't type this though.
Commissioner Atkinson is assuming it's an advantage.
Yes.
Justice, which is not necessarily a universal view. Any other questions, Commissioner Atkinson?
Uh, no, but I'll take that up with you later.
Commissioner McEwen?
Uh, no, thank you. Section thirty-two gets a press in New South Wales that rather suggests that it's a mechanism for the well-connected to apply to a court to deal with usually offences of domestic violence and so on. Is that, is that something that's shared by the legal community that works within section thirty-two? It seems to be something that is availed of by those who've got the resources to do so.
They'd have to have evidence that they had a cognitive impairment or a mental illness.
Doesn't seem to stop the applications, although perhaps that's based on anecdotal evidence rather than statistical evidence. You can't comment, all right, that's fine. Have the magistrates that, in the two courts that you've mentioned, did they receive any training about the way this program was going to operate?
I, I believe there was some preliminary meetings and I, I was involved at Penrith Local Court in a, a meeting sort of midway through the program just to see how they felt about it. And that meeting was supported and facilitated by the department. But as for training, I, I, I'm not sure.
All right. Isn't the general difficulty that you and other organisations providing these very important services face, that there's a pool of money? The pool of money is provided in this instance by the New South Wales Government. As far as legal aid is concerned, another source of funding, of course, is the Commonwealth and sometimes there are private sources. Very difficult to evaluate the priorities for services of a community legal centres, health and community legal centres joined together. How do you approach that? I mean, what's your view about where you fit within a structure where there are a lot of competing demands on what governments will say is a single pot of money?
Well, we, we, we're aligned to people with cognitive impairment. So we, we are going to always be fighting for what they need to get a fair
You will.
chance and, and we know that they're very overrepresented in the criminal justice system.
I understand. I'm just, I'm just wondering how we as an organisation tasked with making recommendations deal with an issue that involves a particular segment of the community? Of course, there should be more resources. The questions that Dr Melaphon asked you about, would you like more resources? Uniformly, you said, not unexpected. Yes. But the question is, how do we deal with the claims that you've got on the public purse, important as they are, with claims made by others who will say, we've got a community. It might be cold communities, it might be people who are, have been in prison but are not necessarily have cognitive disability and who need support. I'm just wondering if you've thought about how the competing merits are to be assessed? If not, don't worry about it.
Haven't, haven't really competed with all the other groups, but, but we see one of the biggest areas of injustice for people with cognitive impairment is in the criminal justice system and we see people's lives ruined and we think it's avoidable. And so we think that it's a priority and that's clearly our bias. But it's based on, it's based on many, many years of, of seeing this happen to people and feeling it's not necessary and it could be changed.
Yeah, all right, thank you. All right, well, I, I assume, well, I'll ask Ms Finesse whether she has any questions.
I do have, um, uh, Ms Coots.
Yes?
Yes.
You do or don't?
I do.
Yes, all right, thank you, go ahead.
Please, you haven't said, Coots, Dr Stigman. Dr Melaphon, you said, you said earlier.
I'm sorry, that was very hard to hear.
Yeah, we're finding it very difficult to hear, Ms Finesse. I'll just ask the operators if we can do anything to make the sound have greater clarity.
I'm sorry to interrupt at this stage, but, um, and maybe because of the late development with respect, respect to Mr Coots' trotters' statement. But I, I have not had the opportunity to have a conversation with Ms Finesse in accordance with the practice guideline about what questions, topics and areas she might wish, wish to ask so that we might be able to see whether these matters can be dealt with in another way.
Well, except that we won't have the witnesses after the adjournment, I assume.
Uh, that, that is so, but.
Why, why don't we find out what Ms Finesse's question is and then we can determine how we deal with it?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair. My question arises very precisely from the evidence that has been given this morning, not from independently Mr Coots' trotters' statement, so it's not a matter that I could answer.
All right, well, pl- please go ahead and, please go ahead and ask the question and we'll see where we go from there.
Thank you. You have a copy of that statement in front of you, Ms Coots?
A copy of?
Mr Coots' trotters' statement in front of you.
Yes, I have it here.
Can I ask you to turn to paragraph twenty-one, page five?
Was that twenty-one that you said?
Yes, paragraph twenty-one on page five.
Just still having trouble hearing.
Uh, I'm not sure if there's anything that I can do, that's my own.
Well, ask the question and it comes up on the real-time transcript, but if necessary, I'll repeat it.
Thank you. Now, you see there that the original model is described as involving a neuropsychologist employed by Justice Health to conduct the screening, that's right?
Yes.
And that over the next page, your service is providing support, coordination and place management. Correct?
I'm sorry.
Over the next page, your service is providing support for management, is that correct?
So, paragraph B, that helps, on the top of page. Now, if you go down to paragraph twenty-two.
Yes.
Mr Coots, Mr Coots' trotters there describes the modified model and given evidence about the modified model.
Yes.
Done, yes? And at the second sentence of that paragraph, it refers to the change being that your service would collect the relevant evidence, see that?
Yes.
You understand that was one of the modifications?
You understand that was one of the modifications?
Uh, yes, that was our understanding.
And you see the next sentence, that the modification was made because of the high cost of having clinical staff, having, undertaking screenings and the timeliness in coordinating clinical assessments and bottleneck with neuropsychologists. You see that?
Yes.
You understood that timeliness in coordinating clinical assessments and the bottleneck with neuropsychologists was a problem in the first scheme, original scheme, that's right?
You understood the timeliness and the bottlenecks with the neuropsychologist was a problem in the first scheme, the original scheme, is that right?
Yes, so as, as the scheme developed, it, it could be a problem, not all the time, but from time to time.
And it's the case, isn't it, that the anticipated features of connect to divert will continue by not having clinical assessments conducted by neuropsychologists?
It is the case, it is, well, it is the case, isn't it, that the anticipated features of connect to divert will continue by not having clinical assessments conducted by psychologists?
I, I don't really know because I don't know what the proposed model is.
In terms of the matters that you were taken to in paragraph thirty-seven, in sub-paragraph A.
Yes.
A service provided with appropriate expertise in working with people with cognitive impairment and being engaged. You see that?
Yes.
And that fits with the definition of your agency most certainly, doesn't it?
That fits with the definition of your agency most certainly, doesn't it?
Uh, yes, in my opinion, it does.
And, and not with a neuropsychologist employed by Justice Health to conduct an assessment.
Sorry.
Chair, Chair, this is, I'm sorry to interrupt, this is, this is very, very unsatisfactory. The sound is terrible. I would prefer very much if I could have a conversation with Ms Finesse over the lunchtime break. It, it's not fair to the wit. And there are practice guidelines that I would like to try and see the spirit of reflected.
The prob- the problem is, I think we're going a bit longer. I understood at the beginning that Ms Finesse wanted to ask a question, at least that's what came up on the real-time transcript and we're going beyond that. So I think the sensible thing to do is to adjourn now. I'm very much afraid that we'll have to ask Ms Coots and Ms Baker to hang around for the luncheon of German. Is that possible?
It's possible for me that Michael is going to Brisbane to support one of our clients tomorrow, giving evidence.
And you're booked on a plane or something, no? All right, well, we'll, we'll adjourn, we'll adjourn, sorry, we'll adjourn. Can I finish what I'm saying? We'll adjourn now until twelve forty-five Brisbane time, I'm sorry, one forty-five Brisbane time, two forty-five Sydney time. In the meantime, if council can try and sort out what these issues are, I'm sure that Mr Baker can stay for another quarter of an hour or so before he has to head off to Sydney Airport or wherever you're going to and hopefully you'll be able to sort it out now. Is there something you wanted to say, Ms Finesse, about that?
I did, my last question was a question I just asked and I had my question from Baker.
Thank you for telling us that. We'll adjourn till two forty, till two forty-five Brisbane time and whatever it is, Sydney. Whatever, we'll adjourn.
The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Dr Melaphon?
Thank you. Ms Finesse has indicated she does not require the witnesses back and I wish to withdraw my comments with respect to the practice guideline because it's now clear to me that the questions sought to be asked but considered to be arising directly out of examination, not previously in a statement. Next witness is Mr Walsh, Ms Crawford will be taking that evidence.
Thank you, Dr Melaphon, yes, Ms Crawford?
Thank you, Chair. Can I indicate that you will find Mr Walsh's statement and his CV at tabs thirteen and fourteen of tender bundle B one? I ask to tender those documents into evidence and for them to be marked as exhibits eleven point three two point one and eleven point three two point two respectively.
Yes, that can be done, thank you.
I can also indicate, Chair, that the attachments to Mr Walsh's statement are at tabs twenty-five to thirty-one of tender bundle D one and I ask to tender these documents into evidence and for them to be marked as exhibits eleven point three two point three to eleven point three two point nine respectively.
That too can be done and the documents will be given those markings.
And Chair, there is a PowerPoint presentation which the commission will be taken to during the course of Mr Walsh's oral evidence. That PowerPoint presentation is at tab thirty-eight of tender bundle D one and I ask to tender that document into evidence and for it to be marked as exhibit eleven point three two point one zero.
That too can be done, thank you.
Thank you. I can also indicate that Mr Walsh will take an oath.
Yes, thank you, Mr Walsh, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. Just to explain where everybody is, Ms Crawford is speaking to you from our Brisbane hearing room. And in that hearing room, there are Commissioners Atkinson and Mason and Commissioner McEwen is with me in the Sydney hearing room. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate who is in the Sydney hearing room and she will administer the oath to you.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Ms Crawford will now ask you some questions.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Walsh, you've provided a statement to the Royal Commission dated the twenty-eighth of January twenty twenty-one, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Is there anything in that statement that you wish to amend or add?
I don't think so. I think apart from the PowerPoint presentation that was added later, I think that evidence stands as it is.
Thank you. And everything in that statement is true and correct to the best of your knowledge and ability?
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Thank you. Now, you're an actuary by profession, aren't you?
That's right.
And you've been an actuary since the late seventies, I believe, is that correct?
I think I finally qualified as a fellow in nineteen eighty-four, but it was a process.
In two thousand and one, you were named Australia's Actuary of the Year?
That's right.
And in two thousand and eleven, you were appointed a member of the Order of Australia and you received the Prime Minister's Award for Outstanding Service to the Disability Sector, didn't you?
Yes.
Among other things, in the past couple of years, you were a principal member of the NDIS Independent Advisory Council?
Um, not for a couple of years, from April twenty nineteen until August twenty, I think.
All right. And from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty, you're a board member of the Australian Commission for Safety and Quality in Healthcare?
That's right.
And you have your own business, don't you, in actuarial consulting?
Very small business, I, I do very little consulting these days. Most of my work is just board work and mentoring.
And between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and twenty, you're a board member with the National Disability Insurance Agency? And you've also got experience as an Associate Commissioner with the Productivity Commission?
Yep.
Can you tell the commission what is an actuary?
Um, there are lots of jokes about what an actuary is, but I'll spare you those. An actuary is a person who's a mathematical. Um, an actuary is a person, um, who's a, a mathematical expert in the quantification of risk and usually the, the application of risk in, um, insurance and superannuation type, um, areas. In more recent years, actuaries have been working far more actively in wider fields such as health, um, more recently disability, um, science, um, environment, so, uh, basically any, any area where analysis of data and the application of data to, um, understanding operational risk and, and data to achieve better outcomes, um, actuaries would, would, would seek to work in those areas. But traditionally, they've been regarded as, but most statutory actuarial roles, uh, in, um, certifying the financial sustainability of insurance companies or superannuation schemes.
And that would very much come back to what you were talking about a moment ago with respect to the, um, analysis of risk.
That's right.
Can I ask for slide two of the PowerPoint presentation to be put up? That's exp dot zero zero six four dot triple zero one dot triple zero two. Mr. Walsh, this is the first of your slides that talks to cost benefit analysis. Can I ask you to explain to the Commission what cost benefit analysis is?
It's, I, I guess, um, it's an attempt to, it's the extent to which an investment in a particular innovation, service, or change is rewarded by the benefits that that innovation or change provide to the entity, um, or to the wider, wider system, depending on the definitions that are used in the, in, in the, um, in the requirements.
And with respect to performing a cost benefit analysis, is there a minimum amount of information that you would need in order to do that?
Um, there needs to be some way of measuring the benefit and also measuring the cost. And that, that goes to the extent to which the, the components of the benefit can be accurately measured, and the components of the cost can be accurately measured. So it goes to the availability of data. But it is possible to do a cost benefit analysis or a cost effectiveness analysis, um, with whatever data is available. It just introduces a whole lot of uncertainty into the value of the, of the exercise.
So if we put up slide three, in slide three, that's exp dot zero zero six four dot triple zero one dot triple zero three, you indicate there are some problems with cost benefit analysis in human services. Can you just explain each of those dot points with respect to, um, what those problems really are and how they might manifest when you are looking at a cost benefit analysis with a human service?
So the, what I mean by the scope of both benefit and cost are usually unclear. Um, a benefit can be a narrow financial benefit to a, an operation, a system, or a service, or it can be a wider benefit, um, which also includes, um, quality benefits to, in the, in the case of human services, there are, there are services to human beings involved. So it also can include wider benefits, which are the improvement in the health, um, quality of life, employment prospects of the, um, of the person for which the benefit is intended. So, so the benefit can be very narrow, or it can be very wide. It can also, um, I think I'll come to another dot point later. Um, the cost is, is, um, also unclear, because, um, again, there are, there are both direct costs, the, the narrow costs of the services, um, but also costs to the person in some cases. So, um, a change which is a negative impact on the person for which the service is intended, um, could actually be a cost which is rarely quantified or, or included. So I, I think that dot point is, introduces a whole lot of uncertainty, a lot of uncertainty into most, um, cost benefit analyses in human services.
Um, I mean, sorry to interrupt. Um, did, did you have something more to add, or you have differently just?
I was going to go on to the next dot point, but if you've got questions on the first one.
I was just going to say that with respect to the first dot point, that, that would be, um, particularly challenging when we come later in your evidence to talk about the cost benefit analysis that was done with the CIDP, because, for example, not only the costs that are easily identified can be factored in, but there are so many other variables that need to be taken into account, is that right?
I believe that's the case, yeah.
All right, sorry to interrupt you, can you go on to the second dot point, thanks, Mr. Walsh.
That's okay, the second dot point is around the nature of the data. Um, and I'll take the second and third dot points together. Um, data in Australian Human Services have typically, um, well, actually, the, the next three dot points have typically been poorly collected and have been, have been, I guess, defined by the silos of services, um, which deliver, so a few examples of that. Um, data in health systems often count episodes of care. Um, for example, the, the data in the Medicare Benefit Schedule, um, counts, um, visits to doctors. Um, and data in the PBS service counts, um, prescriptions and what those prescriptions look like. Um, neither of those attempt to collect data on the impact of that medical service or that pharmaceutical on the patient that it was intended for. Um, similarly, for hospital services, data on, on hospital services typically count episodes of care within the hospital service. Um, so, um, basically an admission, or in, it's actually called a separation in, in hospital data language. Um, and so that, again, counts just that service and the cost and components of that service, rather than any outcome it provides to the, to the patient. Neither the MBS nor the hospital service, um, have a holistic longitudinal dataset that looks at the health and wellbeing of the person. So to, to attempt that sort of exercise, it's necessary to undertake a fairly convoluted linkage exercise, um, across all of the datasets and trying to match up, um, statistical linkage curves and so on to get some sort of a view. So the, the, the point is that the data are not, um, not organised in a way that is amenable to, um, benefit analysis or cost analysis at a, at a person level. Um, the other, the third dot, fourth dot point is that they're also delivered in silos. So, for example, the, a benefit that might be, um, might be achieved in a, in a successful health outcome, um, might, might provide a, a, a cost savings or a, um, a, a quality outcome in a different service level. For example, it might allow the person to go back to work quicker, so you get a better employment outcome. Um, because the services are delivered in silos and the unitary measures are counted in silos, those benefits are not counted, even if, even if they could have been, um, enumerated in person terms, uh, within the health service. So the, the, the silo nature of Australian Human Services definitions, um, makes any cost benefit difficult. Um, the, like, second last dot point, um, goes to the benefits that may extend to other community members. And that is, a classic example is the NDIS, I guess, in which, prior to the NDIS, um, the, the, the relative percentage of disability support that was provided to Australians with disability was based on some work, I, I don't, this, this is work I did previously, so I, I won't tender it in evidence, but just a rough idea. Um, the, the, the rough idea was that, the, the percentage of benefits that were, services that were provided by family and other community members was about eighty percent of total, total, if you like, burden of, of, um, of support. And the NDIS has, by alleviating some of that burden on the community, freed up the opportunity for families and friends and other members to participate in the broader community and have a better quality of their own lives. Um, and the final dot point complicates everything, because, um, the fact that we have an Australian government and state and territory governments means that the silos and the, um, the separations between silos and services is further complicated. And what might, what might be a benefit for a state system might end up being a, for a Commonwealth system. Um, does that answer your question?
It does.
The la, the last, the last is commonly referred to as cost shifting, which is the characteristic of the Australian federal system.
I think that's right, Chair.
And, uh, I know that your, your explanation, if I may say so, is very clear and of necessity simplified, but there are all sorts of other complications, aren't there? There are opportunity costs that come into, uh, systems that aren't easily measured. Uh, there are benefits that are not capable of being transformed into dollar terms, such as the benefit that somebody who has a severe disability might receive in the form of a better quality of life, but not necessarily translated into an economic benefit that can be measured in dollars. So there are all sorts of complications, aren't there?
That's right, I believe that latter point of yours, um, can be measured in dollars, um, if the right data are collected. And I'll, I'll come to that later in my, my evidence, if that's okay.
Yes, I look forward to hearing it.
So, Mr. Walsh, with those issues with human services being properly assessed by a cost benefit analysis uh, activity, um, it is the case, isn't it, that it's all of these variances that cause difficulty with measuring what the outcomes or the benefits might be?
Yes, that's right.
And that then demands that there should be some new approaches to cost benefit analysis, doesn't it?
Well, um, I think it demands a whole lot of things. It, um, it, it demands, first of all, the, the collection and organisation of the data in such a way that, um, outcomes analysis at a person level and a sys, and a total system level is actually something that governments can start to talk about. Um, and once, once that data is collected in the appropriate way, then, then we can have serious conversations about the relative benefits of different types of initiatives. Uh, but we're, we're at the moment a long way away from that.
So would you agree with me that when, um, before you come to a cost benefit analysis, when you're in the planning stages of a new project or a new program, that as a component of looking to fund that new program, it's very important to build into that plan what your evaluation data will be and how that data will be collected during the initial phases and throughout every phase of that project?
Absolutely. And, and I'd go further than that and say that, um, that philosophy of defining and collecting data and linking it to an operational innovation should be part of our overall human service. So I, I, I would extend that, not just to pilot programs, but to the way we design and deliver services.
Is that something that actuaries are asked to comment on? Or are there other, um, expert professionals who look at how to perhaps capture the evaluation data that would be necessary when you come to objectively look at, um, something in hindsight for evaluation purposes?
Yeah, well, I don't think actuaries have a, a, a mandate over this sort of work, but, um, certainly it's the sort of thing that actuaries have done as part of the development of Australia's, um, insurance systems, for example. So, and there's a, there's a long history of the development of Australia's accident compensation schemes. With respect, Chair, I refer to your work with the New South Wales Law Commission in the early nineteen eighties.
Funny, you should mention that, Richard Comston comes to mind.
That's right, um, and the implementation of those types of systems, the Woodhouse recommendations which preceded it, um, stimulated a, a, a quantum change in the way Australian compensation systems were organised from the nineteen eighties until the present. And now, every Australian compensation system, um, requires actuarial monitoring and reporting. And one of, one of my bugbets over the years has been that they also, in my view, should be collecting outcomes data and reporting on that as well. Um, now, we're, we haven't quite got there yet, but we're on the, on the path. And so I think, um, actuaries not, might not be the only people that can do this sort of work, but they're probably the profession which has and has had most, um, experience in understanding the data requirements and the data analyses, um, that are required in a longitudinal, um, outcomes-based, um, set of analyses.
There's no getting away, is there, from the proposition that any analysis of this kind ultimately rests upon assumptions that are inherently uncertain. And we see that in relation to the costing of the tails in workers' compensation claims, which have been notoriously inaccurate. We saw it in relation to the provision for compensation for people, victims of asbestos. Uh, you can see it, uh, with discount rates where a difference of two percent in the discount rate producing a current, uh, present value of an income stream in the future can be dramatically altered by a very small change in, in interest rates. And yet we've seen over the last six years, maybe four, five percent differences in interest rates. So they're the sorts of problems, aren't they, that come in even when you're dealing with dollar figures?
That's right, that's right. Um, I think the interest rate one is a interesting one in, in, in relation to this program coming later. Goes to your earlier comment, Chair, on the, um, whether or not you can quantify the, um, the lifetime benefit of this. Um, a lot of work was done in the late nineteen nineties, early two thousands. Actually, um, a couple of Australians were, were key to the world work that did this work. Um, colleagues of mine, Colin Maders and Taya Voss, who worked with Professor Lopez at the World Health Organisation in developing the Global Burden of Disease Study. And, um, that sought to estimate a global burden of disease and a way of quantifying it based on a concept, um, called disability-adjusted life years dailies. And dailies effectively, um, add together years of life lost and, um, years of life with a disability and quantify the burden, if you like, of disability due to those two dimensions and project it forward. Now, it's an open question whether or not you discount that projection. If you do, it provides a more realistic quantum of global burden of disease. Uh, if it's undiscounted, it just comes up with a, a hugely difficult, dif, hugely, um, scary number. Um, but at the moment, you, if you used the current, the sorts of discount rates that are around at the moment, you would still come up with a scary number. Um, but nevertheless, we do need a, need a way to quantify that global lifetime cost.
Yeah, thank you.
And, Mr. Walsh, the Chair just really asked you effectively my next question, which was about the assumptions that underpin the inputs in a cost benefit analysis and how they can skew, if you like, the, the results that you might get.
Oh, absolutely, and, um, the whole point of collecting data and observing experience is to try and minimise the uncertainty. Um, if you haven't collected the data or haven't designed the data to be collected properly, it, it's literally shooting in the trees. Um, at least in workers' com screens where the data are collected. Um, the implications of the projections are that Um, the implications of the projections are that if this sort of stuff goes wrong, this is what the cost is going to be. And I think that's what you were talking about, Chair, in blowouts of the tail. Um, where changes in experience flow through into massively um underfunded insurance entities, for example.
Yes.
Now, Mr. Walsh, paragraph twenty, you you talk about um at a system level, in particular in social policy systems, the question is usually complicated and a strict cost benefit in financial terms may lose sight of the mission of the system. Can you just expand on that a little for me, please?
So it goes, I suppose, to the the narrow cost benefit analysis of the CIDP programme compared to the second goal of the programme, which is um a a an estimate of the value of, like, I haven't got it in front of me, that it's um, that the second goal is basically um quality of life outcomes for the for the participant. Um, the narrow cost benefit analysis counts the, basically the widgets, um, the cost of the inputs to the programme. And in terms of benefits, it says, well, what does the CID programme provide us in terms of less um, less days of custodial sentence and less days of community-based monitoring? And what is the average dollar per day? And that's our benefit. And that that's a very narrow financial benefit definition of a much broader potential benefit. And um, I mean, it's easy to be wise after the event, I suppose. And I'm not, I'm not being critical of either the design of the programme or the cost benefit analysis of the consultants. But had the programme been set up in a different way and data been collected in a different way, it would have been poss- and run for a longer time. It would have been possible to surmise, I suggest, I suppose, at a much bigger social benefit, which is the actual potential um welfare of the participants. And there are, there are um measures that can do that. And one of them, I notice, um, was included in the second stage of the project, the um personal wellbeing index.
Yes.
And there are, there are others, the Eurocall, uh, the Short Form Twelve. Um, and all of these seek to um rate a person's quality of life on a scale. And an improvement of that scale represents an improvement of quality of life, which can then feed into a disability adjusted year, just a disability adjusted life year calculation. Um, and give a financial benefit, potential financial benefit. So it's possible to do that in this project, because the data weren't collected. But um, that's the way I would have, I would have been happier to see it. And even that doesn't collect all of the wellbeing benefit. It just collects um the direct reported wellbeing benefit of the participants. It doesn't get the benefits to the broader community or family or or the broader system in terms of potential employment and productivity.
Um, Ms. Crawford, can I ask a question?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Um, could I ask you about this, Mr. Walsh? When it comes to crime, uh, there are other costs apart from uh, other costs and benefits other than the participant. For example, if people are not victims of crime because recidivism has been reduced, then there's both a financial benefit and a wellbeing benefit, uh, not only to the participant, but to that wider community of all the people who do not become the victims of crime that they would have been. And is that not relevant to the the cost benefit analysis of a programme like this?
It's a, it's a great point, and um it's one that I've never seen sought to measure. I'm sure that someone's done it somewhere, but that's a really good point.
And uh, the other thing that I, as a criminal judge, often saw is, of course, the cost to the families of offenders, uh, the fact that they um will be thrown onto social security. The children may go into out of home care uh with the effect on the rest of their lives. So there's the, both the economic cost and the wellbeing cost to the members of families of offenders if they're not put into a programme which reduces the chance of a future offending. And the third thing, and the third thing, I think, is um the cost to the community, economic cost to the community of post-prison release, that once someone has been in prison, the prospects of them gaining employment, uh, needing accommodation, actually requiring government support becomes much greater. That's another, apart from wellbeing costs, that's an actual economic cost. So even if we don't just look at the participant, you, I I can immediately think of economic costs that haven't been included in any cost benefit analysis when you're looking at reduction of crime.
And and I think that's, that was one of the weaknesses that I I I named towards the end of my evidence about this evaluation, because it does, the 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 second goal of the process evaluation talks about um connecting participants with the NDIS and other services. And there is no attempt in the evaluation that I could find um to assess the extent to which investment by other services has has assisted those participants who were not eligible for the IS or who were even those who were eligible for NDIS. So I think that's um, that that, and, you know, as you say, there are lots of them. Um, family support, um, employability, all of that sort of stuff.
I don't want to get too philosophical about this, but don't we reach a point, having regard to the sorts of issues that Commissioner Atkinson has raised, and there are many of that kind, that the process of attempting to put costs and benefits in dollar terms is often misconceived? And that what comes out of it is something that is, with the best will in the world, inherently unreliable and is really there for a political purpose. That is to say, if somebody can come up with a calculation that demonstrates that there's going to be a benefit to some particular programme, whether it's for the tourism industry or something else, the community is going to benefit because we're going to have savings here and people are going to be better off. It, I'm conscious of that because we've had that debate in relation to the legal system. There's the former Chief Justice of New South Wales, James Pigman, wrote an article criticizing the Productivity Commission's attempt to quantify the costs and benefits of certain changes to the legal system, which neatly avoids the question of what is justice? And how efficient can justice be? Um, I did a case once that ran for a hundred and twenty hearing days and it took eight and a half months to write the judgment. So my productivity for a year was one case. But it doesn't tell you very much about whether I was or wasn't productive, and it works the other way as well. So we've got to be very careful, I think, and maybe this is where you're heading, about assuming that what comes out as a neat package really tells us very much about the phenomenon being assessed at all.
Yeah, no, I I think that's a really good point. And and, you know, the world is full of consultant reports, but if you added them all together, you'd come up with a benefit of the global burden of disease, which is ten times the world's total GDP. Um, so I I understand where you're going with that. I think the other side is that um cost benefit analysis can also be used for arguments to make decisions that are not really based on all of the available um benefits. And so there's, and hence my my point, that a discreet analysis like this is not always the best way to go. Um, maybe it's to um build systems which collect data and link it into operational um services and outcomes.
You better get a question in quickly, Ms. Crawford, or otherwise it might be diverted again.
Mr. Walsh, at paragraph twenty-two of your statement, you talk about another distortion arising from the expected duration of the benefit. Is this just another indication of some of these underlying assumptions that get built into the formula when you are analysing or evaluating a particular programme?
I I think um that question goes to a lifetime, a lifetime benefit type duration. So um, um, a good example might be recidivism. So the the benefit that's claimed in this analysis is the, is the benefit of one year of reduced offending. Um, and I think a, probably a more um comprehensive, I guess, taking, you know, taking the Chair's previous comment into account that you don't want to boil the ocean. Um, but recidivism doesn't, sorry, benefit, the reduction of recidivism doesn't stop anyone. Um, yeah, I did some work many years ago with juvenile justice, where early intervention among childhood offenders um reduced the recidivism over a lifetime and well, well established in some international um work. Um, so I think, um, again, um, the quantification of the duration of the benefit to recidivism would have provided a greater benefit. Um, and similarly, the quantification of the um NDIS benefit, leverage benefit, not that I think that's, that's the best way to quantify um the benefit, but it doesn't finish after one year. So getting someone under an NDIS package um is a, is a longer term benefit. And that, there's no attempt to um to quantify that, that longer term benefit.
And that comes out, I think, in your slide number four, which is exp dot double zero six four dot triple zero one dot triple zero four, where you talk about uncertainty and direct benefits. Now, the, the things that we were talking about earlier were these indirect benefits, but these are more quantifiable direct benefits, at least with respect to the cost benefit analysis that was done of the CDP. There, there are differences between the draft report and the final report. But if I've understood your statement correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, um, you're not saying that there was any particular issue between the draft report and the final report that gives you great concern. You think that both of those um analytical findings were open on the material that was available to the evaluator. Is that right?
That's right. I mean, I I, um, my understanding is that the consultant was appointed in a, in a fair and reasonable tender process and um made assumptions that could be justified by um by by investigation um after consultation with the um department and probably others. Um, the assumptions were changed in the final report. Um, in my view, both sets of assumptions have problems around their um credibility is wrong with, um, accuracy or um. And the, in each case, the final or the the best estimate probably lies somewhere in between. Um, so I know I'm, I'm not suggesting any inappropriate changes in the report, just that um there are uncertainties and discussion um between drafts of reports and changes in assumptions.
And it's those underlying assumptions and the changes to those underlying assumptions that give you these different results, even in these quite blunt um benefit components that are listed on that slide. That's right, isn't it?
That's right. And I guess the the purpose of of highlighting these differences is it just, it just demonstrates um the different ways in which a a quantification of a human service in the absence of the right data and the the right set of assumptions um can produce different results. Going to the Chair's earlier point, um, the, the top, the first one, the custodial sentence diverted, um, really goes to the likelihood of of um and the, and the quantum of a sentence. And that's, you know, that's um, that's something that could go in either direction, I imagine, based on, based on the particular magistrate or judge. I don't, it's not, it's beyond my role, my level of expertise to say which of those is correct. But um, reading the reports and other, other um material, it it seems whether it's likely to fall somewhere in the middle. Um. Do you want me to go on to the others?
Um. Uh, no, I don't think that's necessary, Mr. Walsh. I think we can come back to that if we have to.
Yeah, okay.
So you say that the, the difficulty at paragraph twenty-five of your statement, you say that programmes, new services or programmes for people with disability um can be viewed as simple changes in a financial enterprise. Or they can be viewed more widely. Is that just um harking back to what you were alluding to earlier with the difference between a very uh blunt cost benefit analysis versus the cost effectiveness of a programme that we were looking at earlier? And how to factor in those less tangible, um, perhaps, uh, variables into the calculation?
I think this particular, are we still talking about this particular slide?
No, no, we aren't, no.
No, okay. Um. Yes, that's right. Um, so there are, there are all sorts of ways in which um a service can provide benefits. And we've talked about most of those um during the discussion, I think. I'd happy to expand them if you, if you wish.
It's, it's really just, if if I can put it this way, is it, is it just that attempting to um add a dollar value and a quantification value to things that are not readily open to doing that make it much more difficult to come to a cost benefit analysis result that that is robust enough for people to rely upon it? Is that really what we're aiming at here?
It's not, that's not what I'm saying. Um, I'm, I'm saying that um there are lots of components to a um cost benefit analysis. Um, and an attempt should be made to quantify all of them, both for the sake of government funds, but also um for the ability to monitor the quality outcomes for um the country and, and the, and the, the efficiency of the service systems. Um, and all of those um require a level of, of investment in collection of information. And in one of those cases, that, is that information currently exist? And it was, I mean, again, harking back to the NDIS, it was, it was one of the attempts to um establish a longitudinal database of the NDIS. And, you know, the, the part from all of the other issues in implementation of the NDIS, one thing has done quite well, has established a longitudinal database, which didn't exist previously.
And the hope would be from that, obviously, that the data that's captured will be sufficiently sophisticated and able to be disaggregated so that you can actually make the use of it that you need in order to focus on what needs to be done for particular subgroups within the the participant cohort.
Exactly. That, that's the whole idea. And that doesn't necessarily mean um having endless evaluations. Um, it means using the data and the learnings from the data to influence operational um investment in a, in a real time. And so that, that, I think, um, goes to the earlier discussions we had around there's always going to be uncertainty. If you don't attempt to um quantify the big picture, you can use the data to achieve real time outcomes um on, in an operational way.
And perhaps we might just go to slide five of your PowerPoint presentation, which is exp dot zero zero six four dot triple zero one dot triple zero five. And this is where you talk about the result of the CIDP report, so the analysis, and the difference between the final report and the draft report with respect to the value, the final value of the programme in dollar terms. Can you just explain, for the benefit of those watching at home, but can you just explain? Can you just explain, for the benefit of those watching at home, but can you just explain how these calculations are done? And what this benefit of a dollar to the twenty three cents is about? And what the benefits of the dollar to the one eleven or the one forty to one sixty is about in the report place?
So what, what that is saying is, and this, this slide needs to be considered in, in the context of the previous slide. The, the top paragraph, the twenty three, the, the twenty three cent that was spent is the final report. And so if you're, if you apply the, the benefit assumed in the final report of days of custodial sentence diverted, multiplied by the assumed daily rate, daily cost of custodial service, plus the assumed rate of diversion of community support monitoring times the daily cost of that, plus the impact of recidivism. All of those assumed in the final report get to a number of twenty three cents per dollar, which means that that every dollar spent on the CIDP, in terms of the actual dollars and cents spent by the New South Wales Government, for every dollar that was spent, there's a direct benefit to the New South Wales Department of Justice of only twenty, of only twenty three cents. So it's a, that's a poor outcome. So for every dollar spent, you only get twenty three cents value. The second paragraph is using assumptions that were in the draft report. And let's use all of those assumptions in the draft report. That says that for every dollar spent on, say, CIDP, there's a, a direct to the New South Wales Department of Justice of one dollar and eleven cents, that's a good result. And further, if the, if the service was longer and cost efficiencies, it potentially could provide a benefit of one dollar forty to a dollar fifty, which quite a good result. So the, the message of that slide is just that the variability in those assumptions on the previous slide led to quite big differences in the outcome of the direct cost benefit. These, this, this, and the, the bottom line there, those, those direct costs have no inclusion of recidivism beyond the first year. So there's a, there's a further potential benefit, direct benefit. There's no inclusion in these, on this slide of the indirect benefits of better outcomes for, for the participants.
Is, uh, the point, is the point we're heading to that neither analysis is worth the paper it's not written on, or one of them is not worth the paper it's not written on, or what?
I, I, I think the the, the point we're heading to is that reading the process evaluation, so leave aside the, um, the, um, cost benefit analysis, cost benefit evaluation, reading the process evaluation of the CIDP finds that the program has very, very good quality. I forget the numbers, but something like eighty seven percent diversion rate and of those those who were assessed for NDIS, something like sixty percent of packages. So a, a, a good outcome in terms of, um, how was the process? There were lots of recommendations to improve the program, but overall, the finding was it's a good program in the process evaluation. What this says to me is that it, it seems counterintuitive to me to not invest in a program that's got a manifestly good on the basis, on the basis of a cost benefit evaluation, which is subject to big differences in the assumptions, the assumptions made by the same consultant when draft report and file report.
And Mr. Walsh, is that really, um, the issue that you've got there is really saying that these simplified cost benefit analysis results, when, when you don't take into account the information that is included in the process evaluation report sufficiently, that you're actually failing to answer the second question of the evaluation questions that you were asked to answer?
I, I, I think that's right. There is, there is an attempt to use a proxy measure of the second question, which is what the consultants call, and I don't remember if I put it in this slide page. Yeah, that's on the last slide.
It's on the last slide. We might go to slide six.
So the, the second part of the evaluation is cost benefit analysis, which goes to the second evaluation question. What are the early health and wealth, health and welfare and reoffending outcomes for participants against cost to government? As I said, the process evaluation finds that there are many. But they make no attempt to directly quantify them by applying sorts of measures I suggested earlier, like a personal wellbeing index or an Eurocall or a whatever's most appropriate for this population. And they seek to quantify this second evaluation question by what they call leveraged NDIS benefits for participants. So they assume that the value of the benefit is the increase in the package size of those participants who've been been able to, to get into the NDIS or increase their package in the NDIS. And my, my point is that trying to quantify an outcome measure by the cost of a support package is the best proxy mes- measure and potentially not a measure at all because yeah, there is no guarantee that a, a bunch of dollars from the NDIS is going to lead to a good outcome. It might, and hopefully it does, but it's not an evaluation of this program directly, in my view.
So, Mr. Walsh, is the, is the takeaway message here that the evaluation that was done of the program was, was done with insufficient and perhaps unsophisticated data that would have allowed a cost benefit analysis to be done more robustly? But also that the number of perhaps indirect benefits that were apparent within the program and recorded in the other report, not the cost benefit analysis report, but the process evaluation report, that they ought to have been informing the cost benefit analysis in a way that they apparently weren't.
If they could have been qualified. And that, that's the, that's the problem. I, I don't believe the data were available to quantify those. Those benefits that were identified in the process evaluation. I think one of the recommendations in the process evaluation is the establishment of a a, a data set that would, that would capture these sort of data.
This isn't the message that sometimes there's no substitute for making a judgment, an evaluation based upon all sorts of factors. Don't want to come back to lawyers all the time, but that's what, that's what judgments in courts do all the time. You make, you, you, there, you can't evaluate every decision that has to be made by reference to quantification of dollar alternatives. Sometimes you're weighing up imponderables and they have to be, in a sense, balanced, but they are not of the same order. And there's no substitute in the end for judgment. That's what happens when politicians make decisions about policies as to what should be done. Introducing a, uh, an NDIS is not a, is not a judgment based simply, and I'm not suggesting you're suggesting this, but it's not based simply upon costs. It, it, it's fundamentally a value judgment about the worth and dignity of human beings and what should be done in order to support people who have complex needs in a civilized society.
Ho- hopefully it's also an opportunity to change the imponderables into ponderables by collecting this odd level of information that allows you to reduce the number of judgments you have to make and, and provide more evidence to make better decisions.
Maybe the difference between us is you're more optimistic about that than I am.
Would it be fair to, would it be fair to say, Mr. Walsh, that your criticism of the cost benefit analysis here is that it's a flawed cost benefit analysis with insufficient information put into it?
I, I don't want to say it's a flawed, because thi- this is an endemic problem in the human services sector. So I think what I'm trying to say is it's a flaw in the way the human services sector collects and uses data.
Thanks. Chair, I have no further questions for Mr. Walsh.
Thank you very much, Ms. Crawford. Commissioner Atkinson, do you have any further questions of Mr. Walsh?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Mason?
No, thank you.
Commissioner McEwan?
No, thank you.
Uh, I'll ask, Mr. Walsh, I don't have any more questions, but I'll ask Ms. Viness, who represents the state of New South Wales, if she has any questions to ask you.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
In that case, Mr. Walsh, thank you very much indeed. I, for one, have found this to be a most interesting and stimulating session. Having said that, I'm not entirely sure it's going to set the Twitter sphere alight, but it's been of great value and interest to the, to the work that we have to do. So thank you very much for the report you've done and the evidence you've provided today.
Twitter is not the world that actually is living in, thank you.
Where do we go from here, Ms. Crawford?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just going to swap over with Mr. Power to introduce the last witness.
Chair, the last witness for today is Taylor Boudin. Her evidence is in the form of a pre-recorded oral statement. Commissioners, you will find that pre-recorded oral statement in the form of a transcript at tabs ten to fifteen of ten to bundle A. I ask that these documents be tended into evidence and for them to be marked exhibits eleven point two nine point one to eleven point two nine point six.
Yes, yes, that can be done.
Thank you. And I'll ask that the pre-recorded video statement of Ms. Taylor Boudin be played.
Alan, thanks for coming in today to do a pre-recording for the Royal Commission. Thanks for your patience. Can I start with the formalities? Can I get you to tell the Royal Commission your full name?
My name's Taylor Boudin.
How old are you at the moment?
I am twenty six.
You pre- prepared a statement for the Royal Commission?
Yes, that's correct.
And you signed that today?
Yes.
And you've got a copy with you today?
Yes, that's correct.
And it's that document and what you put in there is true and correct for the best of your knowledge, believe?
Yes, that's correct.
Also today, we've got Michael and Josh with us in the room as your supports. Brilliant. All right. I've read your statement. Excellent statement. Today is an opportunity for you and I just to walk through that, talk about it. There might be parts you want to talk more about. Might be things you want to emphasize. Talk it up to you. If you want a break, let me know. Starting, the, submitting in your, in your statement is about me, um, some of your experiences and talking about your disability. You're saying in your statement that you knew you had autism before twenty nineteen, when you got the diagnosis. What made you, what made you feel like you knew that?
I guess I've always thought something was wrong, or even my parents have was also. So growing up, we've always tried to find something and then we found out not long ago that one of my sisters had was, is fully diagnosed with autism, doesn't speak or talk, and she's non-verbal. So we looked into it a bit further with Michael, my case manager at the time. And he ended up getting in contact with and he ended up getting the diagnosis of autism stage two.
So when you talk about Michael, this is CIDP. We're going to come and talk a little bit more about that. And Michael's supporting you today. In your statement, you also talk about you had, you've had a lot of different labels.
Yep.
What do you mean by that or what were they?
Uh, so I have like an intellectual functioning disorder. I have been told I'm bipolar, ADHD and stuff like that.
Okay. But the primary diagnosis is being autism. Your statement, you also talk, in it, you talk about growing up
Yep.
in school. And you remember, I think you're talking in it about in primary school, having people assess you for behavior issues.
Yes.
Is that when you, you started noticing?
Yeah, my family started to notice that at a young age, when I was probably like year three or four.
Did you go through mainstream?
Yes, I did. I went to primary school mainstream, but then when I got to high school and started to see that I was actually struggling a lot in year seven, they then put me into the helping.
Support, support unit, yeah. And did that, did that, that help you?
Yeah, it did. Helped me a lot.
All right. When you were, I think seventeen, you finished school and you started working with the disability service. Yeah. And from what I read, it sounds like something you loved and loved.
Yeah, one of my favorite, favorite things to do.
Why's that?
Uh, because my best friend Reese had cerebral palsy and growing up for me, I met him at singing and dancing in primary school. And I used to go to his house every weekend and he used to come to my soccer games and stuff like that. And he went, when we got older, he went to the P and H because the special and he's a really good singer. So he used to be in that. So, and unfortunately, he died on his way home from school one day and got hit by the truck through the red light there. So, so ever since then is why I wanted to work with disabilities. So I went out and got that job and I studied at TAFE for about five years until I finished that.
Yeah. So you got your cert?
Yeah, got my certificate for.
So I don't think that's in your statement.
No, but yes, I have my cert for disabilities. And I got my HSC. So I got my HSC. No, no, I did at school. With the learning center. So if it wasn't for that, I wouldn't have got my HSC.
All right. So there was real difference to your outcomes at school with the right supports. But even, but at that age, you didn't have a formal diagnosis. All right. I want to talk about your experiences with police. And again, if you need a break of something you don't want to talk about, it's fine. Because I think you presented quite well in the written statement. I think you say you first started having trouble with the police when you're about twenty, when you're at a, at a pub with a friend.
Yes, that's correct.
You don't have to go to ins and outs of what happened. If you do, it's fine. But I guess what I'm wondering about is how you found the interaction with police? Whether you struggled, whether they got you, whether it was all a blur, I mean, whether they offered support.
Struggled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they arrested you?
Well, after the incident when I assaulted the girl at the pub, I ran off. I ended up going home. The next day, the police came to the house.
Yeah.
And that's when they wanted to talk to me about it and stuff like that. And then they took me to the police station. And my parents were, stayed at home, so I just went.
By yourself?
Yep. And then they asked me questions and stuff like that.
Did you have a support person? Did, did they offer you a support person?
The program wasn't around then.
Yeah.
So there was nothing. So I just had to deal with it really, go to legal aid on my own.
Yeah. So did they give you bail that day from the cop shop?
Yep.
Then they gave you a date to go to court?
Yes.
You had to get there on your own?
Yeah, my grandfather took me.
Yeah. And then you had to find legal aid.
Yep.
The pen was local.
Yep.
You got, you got, yeah, all right. You got a good, did you get, so you got a good, good lawyer?
Yeah. So that was good.
Can I ask you this? You mightn't talk about this in here, but it seems to be a thing coming up on this topic for the Royal Commission is did, did that lawyer stay with you throughout or did you have different lawyers?
And she got busy.
Yeah.
Like if it was a real bad day in court for her, then I would get a replacement, but the replacement was lock on. If you don't lock on, it ain't great.
Yeah.
So I had lock on, so that was okay.
But did you, were there difficulties because you had to tell your story?
Yes, that is, that is one thing that's hard.
Yeah.
When you've got to keep telling different lawyers the story and they don't know where you're at in the case, like.
Yeah.
Sometimes that can be a disadvantage too, I find, if you get a new lawyer all the time, like they don't bother, you know?
I see. They don't have the passion.
Yes, that's how I feel. There's no passion there or they don't really care.
Can I take you to the program CIDP? It's part of what they do, supporting you.
Oh, yes, yes.
And so that support, does that help? And so that support, does that help? I mean, that helps you with your interaction with the
Court, police, anything really?
And then regulate as well?
Yep.
All right. Um, you got a good behaviour bond, I think, for that first matter. Um, but in your statement, you talk about some of the long-term consequences of that process and I want once you lost your job.
Can't work with disabilities anymore.
Yeah. And then sent you on a bit of a spiral?
Yep.
Kind of upset, angry about stuff?
Yep.
All right. So really negative outcome?
Very.
Um, and you get a bond, but
Yeah.
there's all these other flower consequences for you that don't help you, put you in a worse place probably than before you walked into the door of court. Okay. Um, in your statement, you talk about looking back and feeling ashamed about some of the things you did with the crowd you were hanging out with.
Yep.
Um, and that you, and I think you had probably problems with drugs for a bit at a time, all that sort of stuff. Um, in terms of that time in your life, is there anything particular that you think the Royal Commission needs to hear about? Or is it more, look, my first interaction with police in the courts proved to have negative consequences for me?
Yes.
Um, rather than maybe going off to a supportive environment and learning skills or getting diverted in a way that supports me. I was kind of just left to go off and be of good behaviour. It just didn't help. Is that a fair assessment? Was part of your bond to be engaged with probation and parole or community corrections, is that called?
At that point, um, no, nothing.
Right, just off you go, I'll be good.
Be good.
Um, in twenty eighteen, I think, is when you get, um, contact with cognitive impairment diversion programme, CIDP, and that's who Michael works with here. Um, talked a bit about that, um, about how they support you in court, but it is, does that programme help you in other ways? How else is it?
Yes, they've helped me get my diagnosis, anything relative to court that's needed, like supporting documents and stuff like that.
Yeah.
They help you with, they help you get all the groups like services that you might need, like OT or anything like that, doctors, anything.
And does that help go past the kind of, well, now your sentence is done, see you later? Is it like?
Yes, it's more, it's like continues sort of, and it's like, it's like helpful.
Yeah. But that was, that, that was the last time you were in court, you were linked up when that service started to exist.
Yes.
That'd be a really stupid question to ask, but if that service had been around when you walked over the the local court with your grandfather way back when?
It would have been a whole different story. I think I probably would have got a section thirty-two or something and then
And actually got some constructive stuff going on.
But didn't.
You might not have lost your job, you might have got someone to assist you to talk to them about that.
One percent.
Um, you, you also spent time in, in prison, in custody, your bail refused in, in twenty nineteen, um, some fresh offences when you're on bail. Um, what was the experience of being in prison?
Horrible, absolutely horrible.
So how old were you then?
Twenty-four.
Okay, so a young woman?
Yep.
With a disability, still had it been diagnosed?
No, yes, yes it had.
Yeah. So I think you talk about going
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you, you know, it's pretty, your description in the statement about you, I really got a sense when I read it of a young woman who's like, what just happened to me? I'm in this truck.
That was it.
Wet wild's gone past. I used to go there to enjoy myself. Now where the hell am I going?
Yes, that's it.
So that day in court, when you didn't have supports, I think it was, you kind of just didn't know what was going on.
I had no idea.
Yeah.
So I was brought downstairs.
Yeah.
I was put across, after court, I got brought downstairs and it was like nearly five o'clock.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking to myself, court closes now. So like, where was happening? Am I waiting till the next day or something? And then next minute I'm being put on a bus, truck, and the next minute I pulled up at dropping someone off, then next minute going past Wet Wild and then next minute the people in the back of the truck from me said, we're going to that's when I just broke down and that was it.
Yeah.
Because no one had told me, like.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Had you even gone up in front of the court that day?
Yeah, I did, but I still didn't understand what was going on. No.
Yeah. Um, taking a step back, police that, was that that time?
Yes, but it was [BLEEP] that was dealing with the matter.
Right, okay. But you, you talked about your experience in, in the police station cells there.
Oh, [BLEEP] that was horrible.
That was [BLEEP], was it? Just horrendous. No supports?
No support, nothing.
As a woman, as a person with disability, that's, that's a lot.
Especially when a girl needs things like
And, yeah.
It's not given.
Yeah, basic human.
Yeah.
And you talk about that in the statement. I think too, you said they didn't let you call your family?
Nope. I got one call, and that was to the lawyer.
Yeah.
The lawyer told me not to say nothing
Yeah.
at all, but then next, I went back to my cell after they spoke, the lawyer speaks to them and says, you are not to say but then once they're off the phone, it's a total story, isn't it? They came straight up to my cell, made up a lie, saying such and such, if you don't do this, we're going to take this. And so
Did you do anything to do it?
Yes, sure did.
Right.
That's where they got me.
Yeah. Even after they'd done the call to the lawyer? Um, all right. Do you think having a service like CIDP um, in those sorts of situations might assist? Because I understand part of their role, I'll be correcting this room if I'm wrong, is organising lawyers who understand, who understand cognitive disability and being very sure with police and keeping records and conversations with police about this is not an interview person, that that would have helped?
Yeah, it would have.
Yeah. Um, roughly how long did you spend in the [BLEEP] unit?
Two months.
Two months. Um, should get harder, get it easier?
Uh, well, first day I got there, I nearly got bashed.
Yeah. For probably no apparent reason.
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I couldn't make phone, the one thing that got me was that no one told me when I first got there that I couldn't make a phone call or anything like that to, like, to my partner. So like I'm stressing out, I don't know what's going on, don't know how to do anything. So when I finally did get a hold of my partner, it was biggest weight release. I think it took a couple of days.
All right. Meanwhile, you're wondering what he's thinking and your family are thinking about it. Where's my partner? Where's my child gone? Um, just want to ask you a little bit about the staff that were there. And I think in your statement, you say none of the staff had any idea at all what to do for people with disability.
Pretty much, yeah.
Is it, was that unit one that was meant to be, is designed for people with disability or?
Well, it's [BLEEP] shoes, yeah. So there's [BLEEP] which is like higher up.
Yeah.
Then there's [BLEEP].
Yeah.
And then there's another one. But, uh, most of the people that are in my section were more mental health. The only other person that had a disability was a dwarf that I was with at the time.
So had a physical disability?
Yeah.
Okay. But otherwise it was people with, and were, were they fairly unwell?
Fairly unwell, yeah.
All right. Um, and what about the conditions in there?
Horrible conditions.
Yeah. What about how much time did you spend in cells and out of cells?
Okay, so mainstream get out like early hours, don't get locked back in till like ten o'clock at night. They can stay in their port open for as long.
Yeah.
For me, when I was out at, I think it's eight AM or eight thirty, locked back in at eleven till twelve or something, and then back out till two. I was only out for about eight hours, not even.
Yeah, a lot.
And I was locked in my cell eighteen and a half hours, I know that for a fact.
And you talk about, um, you talk about you were almost assaulted.
Sexually assaulted twice, yes.
Yeah. Um, and what about, um, responses to
Not good.
emergencies or?
Not good, not good. I mean, even when I was sexually assaulted and I tried to press charges on the people that did so, the police, when they did show up, turned around and said to me, there's no point, she's just going to plead mental health. How's that?
Didn't follow it up at all.
Didn't follow it up at all, that's it.
Yeah. Um,
There's, there's heaps of things that are not right in there, like you can't have certain things because other people, self-harm, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You talk about, uh, senior guards and junior guards and your experiences with them. Um, fair to say you experienced it, not me, but some of the senior guards were a bit set in their ways.
Yes.
And probably your experiences with some of the other younger guards were better.
Yep.
Because they're a bit more open-minded and
There was a couple of them that used to be ex-disability workers.
Right.
That felt funny, I was like, I don't know.
Yeah, right.
But yeah, uh, the older ones, especially the ones that had most things on their shoulders, that was it.
Right, they just weren't.
That was black and white. They didn't care if you had a disability, mental health, they didn't care the colour of your skin, they don't care.
Yeah, yeah.
You are nothing but scum to them.
One of the younger guards got your headset or?
Yeah, she did. Yeah, that was good.
Yeah. Um,
But then the older, the older guard, when she would be on, would take my headset and say, you can't have that because it's got a piece of metal in it. As it had, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. You didn't feel that was a real reason why it's been taken off you?
When, when the governor approves something, but then if the senior member of staff in my section was on that day and doesn't want it, then like they'll take it away from me.
Um, while you were in prison, obviously the court case was still going on and I've read about how you, like, all of it was done by video, like?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, I asked.
How did, how did you find, how did you find that?
Horrible.
Yeah.
You can't hear anything. Because when you're in those pods, you, you guys don't understand. I've got, I've got inmates just outside the door yelling and yelling at each other in between the cells, trying to prepare each other's statements about what they're going to say. I've got guards banging on my door telling me I have to hurry up because it needs to be used, like. And the worst thing is I've got disability, I can't hear what's being said, and then I'm not told what even was going on. That's the worst part. Or when I did finish, my lawyer, my lawyer would call and not explain anything and I'm left.
Just tell you the next day?
That you've got, you refused bail, that's all I know.
Yeah.
But that's not good enough.
Yeah. And again, does, does CIDP help bridge that gap in your experience? Yeah.
But the issue with that was that I didn't have any connection to anyone on the outside apart from my partner at first. And I did not get to see my support worker, Michael, for like three weeks into my thing. That's not good. Like, he struggled to get in, it took that long because they, they make a difficult
Almost halfway through the time you've been spending.
Yeah.
Um, and I think it was, was it, took another about six months for the whole thing to, after two months, you got bail?
Yep.
And, and then the court case obviously continued. CIDP were involved when you got bail?
Yep.
I think you talk about how surprised and relieved and
Oh, I was very surprised. I didn't think I was getting it.
You get by, yeah. Um, and did the programme also work with your legal aid lawyers and help you?
Yes, 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 yes. They stayed in connection really well, actually.
All right. On the final day of court, so when, when the sentence came, again, was that a time when you had a support person, you had Michael?
Yes.
And how, what, what role did Michael play for you?
That day, just to really be a support, really.
Explain what was going on as well, or explain at the end what had happened?
At the end of what had happened and stuff like that.
Because
We had to go through from then on.
Part of the effect of your disability at times that
Yep.
s- stuff just goes past, like, it's when you're stressed.
Well, just get through it, yes.
Okay. Um, you, you're on the NDIS, you're NDIS. Um, how has that assisted you? How do they assist you at the moment? Enough or not enough? Work in progress?
Yeah, let's just go to that.
Diplomatic, because you're like, um, can I ask you this?
Could be better.
Okay. Does the practice, terms of understanding how CIDP works, no, CIDP?
Yep.
Are they, is that part of their role to assist with NDIS at this stage or?
Yeah. They try.
All right.
We're trying.
But what I'm trying to get at is I'm trying to understand how that CIDP works in terms of in terms of how broad their assistance is.
Yeah, they help me with that. They, they keep in contact, like if I have any issues, I tend to pass it off to Michael instead of my NDIS workers.
Yeah.
And he follows it up.
Take it back, advocate for you back to.
That's better for me. I find it better if I do that way.
All right. And that's because you've built a rapport with the person at CIDP?
Yes.
Okay. And it's always a one person?
Yes.
I see.
You can't change that person, I mean.
Um, have you more recently, so you, you worked with the disability support service, the disability service back after leaving school, but have you done some more short-term work in that space since?
Yes.
You have, yeah, yeah. And is it, is that something?
That I want to continue doing, yes, yes it is.
Yeah. And I'm building up to, um, the part of, you do some work with IDRS in making rights real.
Yes.
Can you let the Royal Commission know what that's about? Is that probably?
Okay, so I've just started really.
Yeah, that's good.
But, um, it's all about really, uh, there's like five of us and we all have different disabilities and impairments. And we all sit in a group and we discuss ways on how to train police and other organisations on how to actually deal with some with disabilities, these we spoke to by the police on Instagram or court or anything like that. We also are trying to build programmes and stuff around.
If you can't remember, that's fine. I think you talked about that in the statement.
Yeah.
Um, have you, is, is the plan to you guys do some training of those people?
Yes.
Yeah. Have you done that yet?
Uh, the most I've done so far is I actually, can I speak about it? Oh, no, I don't want to speak about it. So about a month ago, I went to [BLEEP] and I met with a bunch of security guards.
Yeah.
And they, it was about fifty odd, and I stood up and I told my story. And it was really powerful because where I was telling my story actually, one of the guards, that was [BLEEP] who was no longer there when I was there, he got left, he got moved on.
Yeah.
He was there. And as I was telling my story, before I noticed him, I was actually explaining how much this person helped me get things like that needed to be addressed.
Wow.
And he was there.
And you saw him?
Yeah, and then he started to cry. So it was like a really good type of thing because I actually helped him in the situation that he was in.
Yeah.
So it was like, yeah, it was good. So, and everyone that day said that I made a huge impact on how they're going to approach things because [BLEEP] has a special unit there.
Yeah.
For the men, which is really great. I heard a lot of good things was happening there. So I'm happy to hear about that.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So how did that session make you feel?
Oh, cool, really.
Nervous beforehand?
No, I wasn't nervous that day. That day I was fine.
Awesome.
It was good.
Um, and I suppose that, that feeling you got and that, um, feeling of achievement, but also one for both sides, a person telling it, but, um, something you want to do more on.
Yes, it is. Like my sto-, I don't know if you know, my story's been published in a criminology textbook.
I had heard on the grapevine about that and I think that's something that's in, is going to go in with your statement.
Yep.
Yep. As is something else I'm going to come to as my last topic, which is your art. I'll ask you about that. I want to understand the human, the person other than all this stuff about police and courts and prisons that we're talking about. Um, but before I ask you about that, um, at the end of this statement, you talk about views and recommendations, um, and how you'd like to see things change and improve in the criminal justice system. Um, what, what recommendations are the most important for you?
The big issues?
Yeah, like are they education, are they?
Yeah, education is a huge one that they need to be
Probably what you started doing, like what you
More educated and stuff like that because the way I was treated is not right.[1687.43] Like, just because I can't have certain food touches does not mean you have the right to say, I don't give a, if you're food, touch your peace, touch your phone. Like, it's things like that, like, all I, all we ask for is just to be spoken to a little bit more nice, like. You don't have to treat us like crap.
Yeah.
It's not the right thing to do. We're in here doing what we have to do, we're in here doing our time. You don't need to make it any worse than it already is.
Yes. And that example you gave, there's, um, because your disability, you have difficulty seeing where things are mixed together. You give an example in the statement about how you, you, you felt intentionally kept being given food that was mixed.
Mixed, it was like.
Said, look, I can't deal with this.
So there were days where I could eat.
And basically I turned around and said, shut it.
Look, I even, as there was points where I even had to call up my partner and family. And get them to try and speak on my behalf to the ombudsman and stuff like that, just to get my needs met.
Yeah.
It does not, right?
Yeah, fundamental. Um, any other recommendations that you can think of now? I think there are a couple more in the statement. It's not a test. But do you, but do you feel, when I ask you about, you talk about educating them, it's. Is your feeling that the best person to educate, like a police officer or a prison guard? About what you're talking about is a person with great experience, is the person with disability?
Yes.
Yeah. But otherwise, they just don't get it.
Well, they have no training, you have no, no knowledge around it. So how can you help someone if you don't understand it?
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna come to the last, what I think is, I've seen those pictures and I need to be corrected, but. You're, you obviously have a very creative side.
Yes.
Art and currently.
I learnt the burning air rehab when I was at Odyssey House.
Oh, right. Okay, and?
And I just kept doing it.
When's your, when are you, when's your exhibition coming up?
I don't know. I don't think, I, I can wipe my eye.
Yeah.
But I don't feel like it's good enough for anything like that. So I'm not that.
So you do it for art's sake?
Yeah, like I'd love to make like a little business as I, but I don't think it's good enough for that, you know?
I think it's pretty impressive though, that is awesome. Um, last thing, I guess I want to say as a wrap-up question is whether there's anything else. You don't think we've covered from your statement or something you wanna emphasise to the Royal Commission?
Yeah, that we need the program back, please.
CIDP?
Yes.